Okay, good evening. We have a quorum, so let's proceed to get started if we can. I'll read from the notice posting the meeting. Town of Holliston Fall Town Meeting, Commonwealth of Mass, Middle Success, Town of Holliston, 20 Constable of the Town of Holliston, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you're hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Holliston, who are qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet in the Holliston High School Auditorium, 370 Hollis Street, Holliston, Mass., Monday, October 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, to act on the following articles and enumerate the articles to be considered this evening. I have the return of service indicating that given our hands and seal this 30th day of September 2022, Ben Sparrow, Chair; John Cronin, Vice Chair; Christina Hein, Clerk. I have this 30th day of September 2022 posted, two copies hereof attested and on within the Town Hall, Public Library, Police Department, Senior Center, and the Town website as herein directed, Constable Barry Sims; a true record attests Elizabeth Greendale. So, the meeting is in order. Before we start this evening, I'd like to read a proclamation that's been provided to me. Be it resolved that this coming Thursday, October 20th, 2022, is hereby proclaimed as Community Media Day. This is a day-long national celebration which acknowledges all of the valuable contributions which PEG Media Centers, of which our Holliston HCAT is one, make to their communities across the state. Be further resolved that Hollison Cable Access Television plays a vital role in the building of our community by encouraging conversations about our common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives. Whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community, today, Community Media Day, we honor and thank our very own Community Media Center, HCAT, Hollison Cable Access Television, for helping to keep our community connected. Please join me in giving them a round of applause and acknowledging them. Thank you. I forgot to inquire early, do the selectmen of the FinCom wish to make opening comments this evening? Yes? All right, so let me just do the prelude to Article 1, and then we'll move to that if we could. Is this my warrant?
Yeah, that's your warrant.
Where's our first Article 1? Here we go, okay. Prior to Article 1, suggested motion, move that the following non-residents and non-voting town officials, consultants to committees be allowed to speak during the course of this annual town meeting. Travis Ahern, Town Administrator; Kathleen Buckley, Assistant Town Administrator; Susan Kutska, Superintendent of Schools; Joan Manad, Assistant Superintendent of Schools; Daniel McLeod, HBS Director of Technology and Digital Learning; Christopher Mayo, Technology Director; Mary Busquet, Treasurer Collector; Sharon Emmerich, Town Accountant; Kevin Rudden, Principal Assessor; Karen Sherman, Town Planner; Scott Moles, Health Directive/Agent; Ryan Clapp, Conservation Agent; Mark Caffeline, Building Inspector; Matthew Stone, Police Chief; Sean Reese, DPW Director; Lisa Borchetta, Senior Center Director; Mark Frank, Parks and Rec Director; Derek Wilson, Library Director; Jaclyn Weiner, Youth and Family Service Director; and Jason Talam and Town Councilors. Do a second to the motion? Any discussion? If not, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And before we have a presentation of the articles, I'm going to call on the board of selectmen for some opening comments, followed by opening comments from the FinCom. Thank you. Mr. Sparrow?
There we go. Good evening. Thank you for coming this evening. My name is Ben Sparrow. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. We are here to do the business of the town according to state and town bylaw. And just, town meeting is the legislative body that gets to approve certain actions and appropriates money, and we appreciate your support this evening. On October 3rd, the Select Board hosted a forum, invited some other boards, and had some members of the Finance Committee come and to review this warrant. We hope this is something that we can do in the future to give people the opportunity to ask questions in a less formal setting than this one. So, just to kind of go through a little bit of what the Select Board's doing, but some of the priorities that we have are public safety, infrastructure, traffic control, and water infrastructure. We are committed to improving the quality of life for all residents in the community. The articles in the warrant sponsored by the Select Board reflect these responsibilities and a few others, and we worked to try to collaborate with others, invest in infrastructure, and to work to improve the delivery of services to the town. Quick outline of the warrant. The free cash certification was for $3.7 million. There's $3.6 million in free cash spending in this warrant, with leaving about $63,000 for May. I did also want to take a moment to thank the Working Group on Infrastructure. There was several members of the Finance Committee and the Select Board that got together to have a discussion about sidewalks, the DPW facility, and some larger water infrastructure projects. Those members were Michelle Zimer, Jay Robinson, and Dan Alfred from the Finance Committee, and John Cronin from the Select Board, so I wanted to say thank you to all of them for doing that. Hopefully, this will be a simpler warrant than we have in May because we don't have a budget, and we're going to need some feedback on a few different articles, so we're looking forward to hearing an interesting discussion this evening. Just a quick update on EMS services. There's a few articles that are pertaining to the EMS services, and we want to just quickly touch on this. The town employed MRI to conduct a survey, a study, excuse me, on improving the department, and there were 100 recommendations that were made across a variety of areas. The Select Board has voted to move the town towards ALS licensure for EMS. That's Advanced Life Support, that's what ALS stands for, and it's currently at a lower license level, and this process will take time. Additional funding for this will be found in Articles 3 and 7, and there will be a budget process to go through in May of 2023. Expect to see a proposal for an Assistant Fire Chief position, and the full movement towards ALS licensing can take between three and five years. So, a review of some of the articles. First, we have the reserves. Article 1 is moving towards the generalization, money from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund. Article 2 is the Pension Stabilization Fund. This is the second time we'll be moving money towards that from free cash. Article 3 is the Programmatic Stabilization Fund, and Article 4 is the Capital Expenditure Fund. So, Article 3 is a new stabilization fund that's being proposed. There's some more information in Appendix A of the warrant packet that you have in front of you. It's meant to create a fund to offset upfront costs that create long-term savings or generate revenue, and it's hoped that this can be used for other purposes, but right now, the plan is to use it for, to work towards ALS. And hopefully, in the near future, we'll be working with the Finance Committee to create some fiscal policies and include it in the financial policies for the town. Some of the town business. Article 5 is moving money into, from the Capital Expenditure Fund to spend on several different requests across several departments. Article 6 is to pay unpaid bills, and Article 24 is acceptance of an easement for the rail trail. Appendix C has a map to show you what that consists of, more information. Some of the public safety elements that are included in this warrant include Article 7 with some fiscal year 2023 adjustments. That will include some money allocated for ambulance EMT and public safety dispatch. Article 8 is an amendment to the personnel bylaw, jobs, and wages, which will be the amendments that would apply to, in the money for Article 7. Article 9 is an amendment to the consolidated personnel bylaw. Some of the elements about infrastructure. Still on. Article 10, public safety signs and equipment. This is for traffic, traffic control, to meet federal regulations and to upgrade some older signs. Article 16 is stormwater management, MS-4 permit. This is year 5, so there's continuing to work on that permit from DEP. Article 17 is about Houghton Pond Dam, is looking to have some, to allocate some money to help gather information and to study the particular dam to figure out next steps to solve for that dam. Article 20 is the sidewalk and ramp repairs in construction. It's $1.2 million from CapEx, and it's part of what was discussed by the Infrastructure Group. It is intended to reduce the backlog of some sidewalks that are in disrepair and to meet ADA compliance. Article 22 looks at the wastewater treatment plant. The study was done to, looking at the wastewater treatment plant on Linden Street that's currently being used by the schools, and they indicated that instrumentation needed upgrading, so this is an article that's to do that. Article 13 is water meter replacement. Article 14 is water system improvements. Previously, this body had approved $800,000 for the Central Street to Bullard Street, but with inflation, a little bit more money from the water infrastructure fee needs to be allocated to complete that project. Article 15 is the water treatment plant improvements, and there's some other improvements that need to be done to existing treatment plants. One of the topics of conversation this evening will be the DPW facility. Article 18 is looking for some money to help with looking at any sites that could be chosen for a future DPW facility. I want to emphasize that no site has been selected at this time, but we need more resources to be able to determine the efficacy of individual sites. Article 19 is a non-binding question for this body to ask the question of whether or not people support purchasing a piece of, a parcel of land for the purposes of building a DPW facility, and see how this body feels about that. There'll be more information when we get to that article. So, wrapping up, there's some upcoming work. Some of it's related to some of these articles for the Select Board. Fire EMS updates, there'll be more updates in the coming months on the results of the pay rate changes. Some, we're going to be continuing to look at public safety dispatch. The DPW facility, the goal is to narrow the sites and do some studying of sites that have been selected to determine what is the right, what is the site that the town is comfortable with, and hopefully, will be in front of this body in May. And more information about Houghton Pond to determine what to do about the dam there. Some of the other upcoming items, having future conversations with other boards about the budget process, future revenue sources, and any plans that we need to make to facilitate those revenue sources, economic development opportunities and capital planning. Obviously, the budget preparation will come into play, including the Assistant Fire Chief position I mentioned, and also asking for additional officers for the Police Department. And also, looking at long-term capital planning for infrastructure on water and sidewalks. Hopefully, we can continue working with the Finance Committee. That Working Group can continue to have additional conversations. There's additional new sidewalk and water infrastructure plans that we need to discuss to determine the right approach for those items. So, in wrapping up, I wanted to say thank you all for coming this evening, and I also wanted to take a moment to say congratulations to Mary Busquet, who's retiring, and she's served the town as the Treasurer Collector for a number of years. Wanted to say thank you to Mary and congratulations. I also wanted to take a moment to thank the Town Administrator Travis Ahern. He put in enormous amount of work into this warrant, so I appreciate that. Also wanted to thank, take a moment also to thank the Assistant Town Administrator Kathleen Buckley. She also put together several of the articles. And I wanted to take a moment to thank the Town Hall staff, like Peg Driscoll and Donna Muzzi, who work tirelessly in the Select Board Office for the Town Administrator. Also wanted to take a moment to thank HCAT for offering childcare services. I know it's late and it's a little awkward. On a personal note, my three-year-old's at home, and I have to say, you know, my wife steps up every Monday night so I can be here and I can do things like this, and I'm incredibly grateful for that. And, you know, we're volunteers, volunteering our time, and it means a lot, but there's a lot of people who helped to make that happen. So, wanted to say thank you very much for coming this evening, and, it's all good. It just says thank you. So, have a wonderful evening. Thank you very much for coming out, and let's get to business.
Ken, before you speak, I wanted to offer to my congratulations for your designation as Hollison Citizen of the Year by Celebrate Holliston. And go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay. First, I want to start by saying, Chris, the battery's dead because it is on. So, he was wondering why the remote wasn't working for Ben, and I just checked to make sure it was on. So, it's the remote, not Ben. But, second, thank you all for coming today. Obviously, it's good to be back, so to speak, in terms of talking about the finances, but let's get right into it because I know we have a lot to cover tonight. Chris, you're going to have to change for me, so. Okay? So, first, start out where we were in May and where we are now, okay? And actually, give me one moment. Since the pointer's not working, I have to actually see what Chris is changing behind me, so. Okay? Okay. Our net state aid for Holliston ended up being significantly lower than we planned in May, about, largely due to a $200,000-plus increase in charges to the town. Just for the record, this is one reason why in May, when I talk about local aid, I talk about net local aid and not the top-line number, because this happens frequently where the charges exceed our expectations. Not to this degree, though. However, in this case, we believe that the charge is inaccurate and will be corrected later, but unfortunately, not in time for us to correct the issue before we have to submit the tax rate for FY '23, so we're taking other measures to take care of that. We also had lower-than-expected solar revenue for FY '23, and that's largely due to delays in the solar project over at the landfill. Everybody here knows about the inflation issues, the labor issues, supply chain issues that are getting better but still remain from the pandemic. On the good side, the town is benefiting from the 4.4 million in federal stimulus money, the ARPA fund. That will continue until fiscal '24. And as Ben mentioned, the other thing that happened since May is we did form this Working Group to facilitate better planning and communication between our two boards so that we can align ahead of town meeting. Okay, next slide, Chris. Okay, so, as Ben pointed out, and I will point out that I'll be saying that a lot because he pointed out a lot of what I'm going to be pointing out, but going into a little more detail, the final free cash number was over $3.7 million. It's a slight increase from last year, and it's largely due to increases in local revenue above our model and the impact of the federal stimulus funds, because what happens when the government gives us money is that's money we don't have to spend, and so that money we don't spend flows to free cash. So, we shouldn't get too used to huge numbers like this, because when the stimulus ends and other actions we're taking, it's likely to come down to a more reasonable level. In the warrant you have in front of you, you're going to see FinCom recommendations for spending most of that or allocating most of it, not spending it. $802,650 will be used to fund one-time article expenses under Articles 6. You see them there, I don't have to read the numbers. A million fifty to the various stabilization funds, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. And 1.8 million to the Capital Expenditure Fund. As you know, that, we had generally adopted a strategy of using excess free cash to fund capital, because that's typically our most, it's one-time expenses, and it's typically high-dollar expenses. And that leaves $63,599 held over for use in May. Next slide, Chris. This is a slide I show every year just for anybody who's new and doesn't understand what free cash is. Nothing's ever free, but we call it free cash. It's basically unexpendited monies from the prior fiscal year. So, what this means is money we appropriated in fiscal '22 that wasn't spent by the end of the fiscal year. It's the actual versus estimate of local receipts. When we begin the budget process, we put together a local revenue model, and then, to the extent that our revenue exceeds that model, those excesses become free cash. And then there are one-time things where we may receive a settlement, there may be extra aid handed out by the state, other things like that that result in kind of one-time revenue that does not get spent in the year it's allocated, that flows through to free cash. In general, the state has always recommended biasing for 3% to 5% free cash, and we're currently near the top of that range, largely due to the stimulus funds pushing us up a little bit this year. As the FinCom has always said, best financial practice is to use it only for one-time items. It is entirely possible to have 3.7 million this year and have 100,000 the next year. It can be highly volatile and can even be negative if your revenue modeling turns out to be a little bit off, which is why the state always recommends that you don't use, you don't fund operating expenses. And in matter of fact, if you go back probably a decade at this point, the Finance Committee worked to remove the pieces of free cash that were in the operating budget over a several-year period to get us off that idea of using this variable funding source. So, we haven't used free cash for operating in several years. On the reserve side, we have our financial policies that target a stabilization fund minimum of 12% and a target of 18%, and the Article 1 recommendation keeps us in this target range. As you might imagine, as the budget incrementally grows, we need to put a slight amount each year in to keep up with our target percentage. The 1.8 million to the Capital Expenditure Fund brings the total allocation for capital for fiscal '23 between this and what we did in May to about 3.5 million. And if you look at what we're recommending for spending, we spent in May and what we're spending now, from the Capital Expenditure Fund, it's pretty much a wash. We're spending just about 3.5, 3.6 million. And finally, of course, we have the $250,000 appropriation to the Pension Stabilization Fund that we started and created last year, and that's going to be another long-term obligation fund that we're looking to protect the town long-term. Okay, so, you, in your warrant, you see this thing called a Programmatic Stabilization Fund, and I want to explain that because that's something new, this town meeting. It is not a reserve fund in the traditional sense. When we think of stabilization and reserves, it's money we're putting away for something in the future. When I was sitting down with Travis earlier this fall, when we were discussing the warrant, we were talking about several projects that might be coming up that would need some initial funding. And I said to him, you know what this really seems to want, is something like a fund we use to fund cost-saving or revenue-generating activities. So, the way I perceived of it, and the way Travis has implemented it, is it's like a venture fund for the town. There are lots of projects we can do in this town that we recognize would save money, but they require an initial investment, and it's always difficult to find that initial investment. So, the idea is we put some money away from this good free cashier we have, and we create this fund. The purpose is to kickstart these initiatives that over a three- to five-year period will either lead to increased revenue or cost savings, and then use the savings or the excess revenue to pay back the fund to fund our, fund future kickstart activities. So, the emphasis here is on, this is not to create a fund to just take free cash, build it up, and spend it. It's a fund where we should be able to fund it maybe this town meeting and a couple of other town meetings to build it up to a level that can sustain this kind of three- to five-year investment. But then you don't need to fund it anymore, because what'll happen is as you're, as you're investing, you realize the cost savings, you allocate those cost savings back to the fund. And I'll give you a perfect example of where this might have been helpful a year ago, when we talked about the streetlights. So, the town took ownership of the streetlights, and we, as part of that, we wanted to convert them all to LED because they're, as you know, very energy-efficient, inefficient lights right now. That required $380,000 to do that, that we approved in May. Okay? If you had had this fund around, you could have easily, we could have said, okay, take the 380 from this fund, use it to upgrade our streetlights, make them all LEDs. That will drop our electricity costs for streetlights by $80,000 a year. So, then you say, okay, for the, once we do this conversion, we take the 80,000 that we would have been saving on the streetlight budget, and we put that back into this fund for four years to repay the money that was invested in the streetlights. And then after that, the town sees the savings from then on, and the fund is replenished and ready for use to kickstart something else. So, I just wanted to point that out because this isn't a reserve in the traditional sense. This is a means by which the town can look at cost-saving or revenue-generating activities. And I want to emphasize that from the Finance Committee's point of view on this, the plan for repayment is part of the discussion. It's not meant to be somebody's got a pet project they just need money for. It's, the discussion comes with, why do you want to make this investment? Where is it going to pay back the town? And when is that, what's the timeline for that payback so that the fund can be replenished and used for other activities? Okay? Because it's a stabilization fund, all the expenditures from it will have to be approved by town meeting, which is a good thing. So, basically, you, as investors in the town, so to speak, can decide which ventures we should fund within the town to implement cost savings or revenue-generating activities. Finally, I'm going to skip through some of these because Ben covered a lot of these war and articles, but I have my usual summary of the financial articles. We just talked about the stabilization funds in Articles 1, 2, 3, and 4. The capital purchases are all in your warrant. It's, as I said, it's a million dollars in recommended spending. There are other articles here that spend from capital, bring the total for the year for the two town meetings to 3.6 million. We have the unpaid bill, again, relatively self-explanatory. There are a couple of budget balance transfers for FY '23. Just so you know, this does not change the, there are two transfers, and then there's a use of the stabilization fund once we establish some of the money. The two transfers that are there do not change the bottom line for FY '23, they're just moving numbers, money around between budgets. Articles 8 and 9 are primarily updates to reflect the changes the Select Board made to the EMT pay schedule. There are some other minor updates and a reworking based on an HR study, but there are no substantive changes that are going to result in vast changes in pay for anybody in town. Article 10 is a small amount of money to implement sign audit findings. Next slide, Chris. Okay. Article 12 is CPC recommendations, and this is probably the smallest amount I've ever seen CPC looking for at any town meeting, which is good. 13, 14, and 15, and I wanted to highlight these for a couple of reasons. Years ago, when we replaced all the water meters, and I think it was probably 12 years ago or 13 years ago, as part of that, we established a water meter replacement fee that you see on your water bill. The intent of that was to prevent the town from having to find money to replace the meters by collecting over a 10-year period, so after 10 years, we're ready to replace them all and keep them up with EPA recommendations. Well, it's working, right? Now, we're time for meter replacement, and we're taking the money out of that fund. We're going to drain it down to near zero, but then that'll start building up for the next replacement 10 years from now. The main replacement, again, another strategy that's working. This was the infrastructure fee, and like everybody, I don't love paying $75 a quarter for my water, but it's doing what it was supposed to do, which is it's putting money aside for water main work, and so we're allocating that money to do water main work this time. And finally, Article 15 is, again, it's maintenance and filters at the treatment plant. You can read the details in the warrant, but again, this is where the water rates are set to generate retained earnings that cover the maintenance of our treatment facilities. So, those three articles are really highlighting that things are working well when we set up the right structure. 16 is stormwater regulation. That's a mandatory thing we have to do to complete a process from last year or continue the process from last year. And as Article 17's explanation tells you, the Houghton Pond Dam is a dam that's in kind of a poor condition, and the Select Board is going to be charged with figuring out what to do with it, but there's some work that needs to be done to determine what decision needs to be made there. Okay? Next slide, Chris. Okay. Article 18, as Ben mentioned, this is for the new DPW facility planning. It's generally engineering work, it's not site-specific, and will help the Select Board identify other possible sites. Obviously, the Finance Committee has no role in site selection, we're just talking about the money. Article 20 is for existing sidewalk repairs for ADA compliance. This is one of the things that came out of the Working Group, was that it was very clear to everybody that our existing, so before we talk about new sidewalks, our existing sidewalks had to be fixed first to bring them compliant. So, this is the first, or actually, I think this is the second one, second payment of potentially about $4 million according to STANTEC that's going to be needed to fix all the sidewalks to make them compliant. Article 21, in case you're wondering, we do a lot of feasibility studies. I usually get up here and say, I don't really like to spend money on studies, but I do like to spend money on studies when they're going to bring back more than we spend on them. So, this is one where we spend a small amount of money, and it makes us eligible for state grants, and this grant program is not a recurring thing, so this is one of these, when the state runs the grant program, you get the money, you get the material, and you try to get some money from the state while you can. Next slide, Chris. And Article 22, the, this is to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant, and just for the record, I know that there's been discussion at the Select Board about potential other uses or modifying the use of that wastewater treatment facility. This has absolutely nothing to do with that. These are equipment upgrades that are needed there regardless of what future uses of the facility, so don't think that voting on that in any way implies any change in use of the facility. Article 23, again, this is another article where it's got a financial implication, which is why we have a recommendation on it. I know that there are a couple of solar projects being floated around town. Approving Article 23 does nothing to impact the approval or disapproval or comment on those projects. It merely says that if the projects reach fruition- It merely says that if the projects reach fruition, it gives the Select Board the authority to negotiate a tax agreement for them, which is a good thing because in general, those agreements are favorable to the town. That's why I said it protects the financial interests of the town if the projects are approved. And finally, in Article 26, that's the envisioning Future Holliston. That was a group formed by citizen petition a few years ago. They've gotten a lot of data, and they are looking for a consultant to help them analyze the data and develop a strategic plan. I think they're a lot, they've got a lot of valuable input, and they need to finish their work. As a reminder, FinComs are usually, meetings have been virtual since the pandemic, generally at 7:00. And for those of you who are wondering why we're still virtual, a lot of that has to do with the fact that we get far more participation virtually than we ever did when we were sitting in Town Hall. And obviously, it's more convenient for all the members when we do that. Of course, that may not last forever, but for now, we receive much more public participation on the virtual sessions. You see our email there? And as a reminder, you should all be back here on May 8th of next year. And I said 2022, it should be 2023. You know, I'm stuck in this year. But finally, when you look at the warrant from a financial perspective, this town meeting is all about capital and one-time spending. It moves several projects forward. None of the articles change the operating budget except for the transfers I mentioned in Article 7, which doesn't really change the bottom line, just moves money between budgets. Our reserves are staying strong to maintain our AAA rating, which is going to become a factor as we start looking towards some significant capital projects. And I would like to echo Mr. Sparrow's comments about Mary Busque. I have had the pleasure of being on the Finance Committee for many, many years, as you know. And during my entire tenure on the committee, I've worked very closely with Mary. I can honestly say that I've probably worked more with her than with, than any other town official ever has, for good or bad. But Mary has been a pleasure to work with for many, many years, and I will certainly miss her because she has been my right-hand woman, so to speak, in terms of getting the data on the town whenever I need it. She's always responsive, always gets in touch with me the second I send her a request. I get a response in 20 minutes. So I wish her the best of luck, and the Finance Committee wishes her the best of luck on her retirement. But I just, finally, I have it right up here. I show this message a lot, just to reiterate. We're keeping a close eye on the town finances. Things are always dynamic, and we're doing our best to make sure that the progress we've made to date is maintained. Thank you.
Ben and Ken, thank you for those comments. They're helpful. Article 1, General Stabilization Fund, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds a sum of money for the General Stabilization Fund or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to appropriate $400,000 from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $400,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the Article 6.0 with Mr. Robertson absent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. Article 2, Pension Stabilization, and let me offer the comment also that unless I indicate otherwise, the vote required is a majority vote. If I indicate differently, I'll let you know what the different vote is required on an article and how we're going to approach it. Okay? Article 2, Pension Stabilization Fund, sponsored again by the Select Board. The estimated cost is $250,000 to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the Pension Stabilization Fund or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to appropriate $250,000 from free cash to the Pension Stabilization Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
FinCom recommend that the town appropriate $250,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the Article 6.0 with Mr. Robertson absent. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. Programmatic Stabilization Fund, sponsored by the Select Board with an estimated cost of $400,000 to see if the town will vote to establish a programmatic stabilization fund for the purpose of funding the upfront costs necessary to pursue long-term operational and/or capital savings and to transfer from available funds a sum of money to said fund or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to establish a programmatic stabilization fund under Master and Law Chapter 40, Section 5B, for the purpose of funding upfront costs necessary to pursue long-term operational or capital savings and further to appropriate $400,000 from free cash to the programmatic stabilization fund. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
The FinCom recommend that the town appropriate $400,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the Article 6.0, Mr. Robertson again absent. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And before you speak, ma'am, let me give an explanation on this. I was holding off on explanations in case there was inquiry, but let me share it with you in case it answers your question in advance. The town is often presented with potential initiatives that require upfront costs to create long-term savings or new revenue, where the financial benefits cannot be realized without funds to kickstart the initiative. This fund allows the town to pursue cost-saving initiatives by funding the upfront costs and balancing the financial benefits over time. An example of this process is the town's ambulance service, which is currently licensed at Basic Life Support, BLS, with a recommendation from a third-party, Municipal Resources, Inc., to strive for advanced life support, ALS. To achieve ALS, the estimated transition period could be three to five years, at which point the town would begin billing insurance carriers and Medicare at a higher ALS rate, allowing the town to replenish this fund through a future town meeting. See Appendix Memo from the Town Administrator, the Select Board, and FinCom attached to the warrant. Okay, ma'am, right ahead. Yes, ma'am, you oppose your question? Sure, come on up to the microphone. Just identify yourself, please. Right up here, please.
Liz Tyler, 17 Norland Street. I wish to emphasize to you the benefit, the health benefit, as well as the financial benefit of advanced life support. I lived in Holliston for more than 30 years before I needed an ambulance. After open-heart surgery for a tumor on my heart and a replacement of my bicuspid valve, I came home. Then, in the fall of 2020, something was very wrong. I called for an ambulance. I waited about 15 minutes for the Holliston ambulance to arrive. All the EMTs could do is hold my hand and say, relax. I knew that I needed an EKG. They had to call the Ashland Advanced Life Services ambulance so that Ashland could administer the EKG to me, and they took me to Newton Wellesley Hospital. I, like many people, thought the ambulance works. Then I learned the reality. First, I think it's important to know the difference between what is basic, as I understand it, and what is advanced life services. A basic ambulance is one that can treat persons which have lower extremity fractures, and they can transport you to a hospital. An advanced life services ambulance can give you injections, administer medications, start IVs. They have airway support equipment, cardiac life support, cardiac monitors, glucose testing devices, and they can monitor those on chronic ventilators. Holliston right now is in a lose-lose situation. We're in lose as far as our health benefits are concerned, our health and safety is concerned, and we're in a lose situation financially. Let me elaborate. The towns of Hopkinton, Ashland, Medway, all have advanced life-saving ambulances with staff at the station. Holliston has a basic life services with EMTs who are coming mostly from their homes. First, a call comes in. Those of you who have scanners know the situation. A call comes in. They have to, people have to come from their homes to the station, and at the station, they are required to check the ambulance, and then they go to your home. Think of that situation in a snowstorm. Holliston is the only town in Massachusetts that has what is called a provisional basics license. And that is because the DEP determined that because of the deficiencies, they could only grant Holliston a provisional license. So not only do we have a basic license, we have a provisional basic license. And that provisional basic license is from June 30th of this year until December 30th of this year. And this is not the first time this has happened. In 2021, the Department of Public Health found more than 30 issues that they issued citations to the basic ambulance in Holliston. This year, we have 20. 20, 20 issues that are wrong, 20 issues that have to be corrected in what we call basic, basic ambulance services. This means that the critically ill or those who need cardiac services, as I did, will have to wait for an ambulance to come from another town. We're also losing financially. We pay a higher tax rate than Hopkinton, than Ashland, than Medway. And the residents of those towns pay for those services, and we use those services at our cost. Those services, those residents, if the services are not being used for those residents when they need them, that is an issue. And one of the towns has complained that Holliston too frequently uses their town services. I want to give you a few examples. The week of September 9th to the 15th, Holliston used advanced life services 11 times, which, at the estimate insurance payment, is $1,300 per trip. That was a total of $14,300 that Holliston lost. Also, on the week of, during that week, on September 11th, there was a horrible car crash on Highland Street. Imagine the situation. Five people were thrown from the car. Holliston sends one ambulance, one ambulance. How many ambulances does Holliston have? Three. Holliston sends one. Then who has to be called? Ashland, Medway, Sherburne, and Brewster. So we have, so imagine what it would be like, once again, if you're critically ill or you're in an ambulance, and your ambulance has to be called from another town. All right? So here, we had two patients that were so critically ill that they had to be med flight to UMass Memorial. All right? So what that means is, within that month, if you, within that week, excuse me, that means that considering those ambulances and the other ambulances used during that week, it's $18,200 that Holliston could have had. Let us look at the week of September 30th to October 6th, just from a different financial perspective. Holliston's basic ambulance went out 19 times. They called for ALS seven times. That means 26 trips in one week. We need advanced life services in this town. We are a large enough town. We're larger than Hope Dale, which is half of our population, which has advanced life-saving ambulances. So financially, for a basic, we received $875 for a trip. If we had had ALS for those 19 trips, the difference would have been $8,550. The town, from, and adding to that, the six ALS trips come up to $7,800. Therefore, this, for this week, the town would have received $16,300. Let us move to a win-win situation. Win for our health so that we have quicker, better ambulance service, better life-saving service, better trained technicians on our ambulances. And let us win financially so that we will receive more income for the services that we receive. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator for having the MRI study done because it opened our eyes. I really would advise everyone to clearly look at this so you can see what a study says about our services. And I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator and the Finance Committee for supporting this article. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Sparrow?
Liz, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Just so people are aware, Appendix A, page 27 of your warrant, outlines the next steps that Ms. Tyler was referring to for moving towards ALS services. And the MRI report is also available online on the town's website. And we're working to fix the issues she's brought forward, and we're working towards that end. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? If not, this article, because it proposes to utilize stabilization funds, requires a two-thirds vote, so we'll proceed to a vote. If it's unanimous, then that's it. And if it's not unanimous, I'm going to call for a hand count vote at the suggestion of the Attorney General's office. Okay? So all those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 4, Capital Expenditure Fund, sponsored by the Select Board with an estimated cost of $1,800,000. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds a sum of money for the capital expenditure fund or take any action relative thereto, the motion is move that the town vote to appropriate $1,800,000 from free cash to the capital expenditure fund. Is there a second?
Second.
The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate 1.8 million from free cash for the purpose stated in the Article 5.0 with Mr. Alfred and Mr. Murphy absent. Any discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, so voted. Article 5, Capital Budget, sponsored by the Select Board. Estimated cost $999,780. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money for the purposes of capital improvements, capital expenditures, including replacement of old vehicles and equipment for the following departments: police, ambulance, DPW, parents' highway and grounds, facilities, and schools, and authorize the Select Board to trade or sell equipment toward part of the purchase price or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to appropriate $999,780 from the capital expenditure fund for the items listed in the warrant in Article 5. Is there a second? The Finance Committee recommends that the town appropriate $999,780 from the capital expenditure fund as follows. $75,000, and this is largely for the benefit of the folks at home who may not have the warrant in front of them. $75,000 for Town Hall generator, $160,000 for Central Street Fire Station improvements, $10,000 for senior center HVAC improvements, $112,000 for two tractors with attachments for DPW Highway and Grounds, $27,280 for dump truck-mounted spreader for DPW Snow and Ice, $4,400 for supplemental funding of a truck with brine tank and applicator for DPW Snow and Ice, $44,000 for a debris vacuum and sweeper for DPW Grounds, $165,435 for three fully-equipped police vehicles, $75,000 for a digital recorder and camera system at the police station, $93,600 for electronic control weapons, ECW, also known as TASERS, $63,000 for high school lab improvements, $40,625 for kindergarten. $63,000 for high school lab improvements, $40,625 for kindergarten student technology devices, and $128,000 for grades five and, grades five and eight student technology services.
128.
I'm sorry.
128.
Excuse me. 128,800 for those technology student devices. Do we have a second on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, we do. All right. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. I'm sorry. This also requires a two-thirds vote. If it's unanimous, we'll proceed. If not, we'll go to a hand count. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Article six, unpaid bills sponsored by the Select Board, an estimated cost of $37,450. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, a sum of money for unpaid bills for prior years or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $37,450 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second?
Second.
The amount stated in the article is $37,450, and the vendor who is to be paid is Lifeline Ambulance Services. The explanation, just for the town meeting's edification, is that the town changed its third-party vendor for ambulance billing, and during the transition, various bills were sent to the incorrect party and not brought to the town's attention by FY 2023. The bills are valid and must be paid, but town meeting must approve prior year's bills before they can be processed. This requires a fourth, fifth vote because it involves the payment of a bill from a prior fiscal year. We'll proceed again to a voice vote and see if that's unanimous. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous. Article seven, fiscal year 2023 budget adjustments sponsored by the Town Administrator at an estimated cost of $275,502. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of supplementing various accounts for the town's fiscal year 2023 annual budget, previously voted by the town under Article 27 of the warrant for the May 22 annual town meeting, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is as follows. Move that the town appropriate $231,000 from, from the programmatic stabilization fund as listed, and that the town transfer $29,023 from water retained earnings to the Water Enterprise Fund debt budget. Further, that the town make the following transfers: $5,913 from the Building Inspector Budget to the Human Resources Budget, and $9,566 from the Library Budget to the Park Department Budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, this also requires a two-thirds vote. We'll go in same fashion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous. So voted. Article eight, to amend the Consolidated Personnel Bylaw, Section 29 Job and Wage Classification Plan sponsored by the Town Administrator. To see if the town will vote to amend the Consolidated Personnel Bylaw, Section 29 Job and Classification, Job and Wage Classification Plan, by reflecting those revisions, deletions, and/or additions as set forth below to be effective January 1, 2023, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is to move that the article be approved as presented in the warrant. The Finance Committee recommended favorable action 6.0 with Mr. Robinson absent. Is there a second?
Second.
These, I think that both of these articles are explained by the speakers at the introductory comments here this evening. So is there any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Amend Consolidated Personnel Bylaw sponsored by the Town Administrator. To see if the town will vote to amend the Consolidated Personnel Bylaw by adding the following language after Section 26 with appropriate renumbering thereafter, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that this article be approved as presented in the warrant. The piece of the article that will be amended will be as follows. The amendment to the Personnel Bylaw effective January 1, 2023. Full-time dispatches are considered salaried non-exempt employees. Their weekly payroll will be paid by dividing their annual salary by 52.2 weeks. In addition, all full-time civilian dispatches, not part-time and per diem personnel, will receive overtime pay for work, working any unscheduled shift, whether it's voluntary or forced. The FinCom recommended favorable action 6.0 with Mr. Robinson absent. Again, the motion is moved that this article be approved as presented in the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Public safety signs and equipment sponsored by the Select Board with an estimated cost of $22,000. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purposes of acquiring, disposing of, and installing signs recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee, TAC, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the town vote to appropriate $22,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second?
One.
The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $22,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the Article 6.0 with Mr. Robinson absent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Article 11, Governance Committee Bylaw Recommendations sponsored by the Governance Committee. To see if the town will vote to make four separate amendments to the town's general bylaws as follows. Amendment one, replace Article nine Planning Board of the general bylaws as presented. Amendment two, add a new article to the general bylaws specific to scenic roads as presented. Amendment three, replace Article seven Town Moder, oh, I was going to say, hopefully, they replace the Town Moderator. No, replace Article seven, Town Moderator of the general bylaws as presented. Amendment four, add a new article to the general bylaws to create a general bylaw review committee as presented. The motion is move that the town vote to amend its general bylaws as presented in the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
The explanation offered is that the Governance Committee is represented at a town meeting, is present at a town meeting for questions and answers, will provide a short presentation. Additionally, see Appendix B for redline format of the article which illustrates before and after the proposed changes. Mr. Tyler, somebody on behalf of your committee, or you?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Actually, we presented this article so that at least there would be one article in this town meeting that didn't deal with finance. So I'm not asking for any dollars. Article two, Article 11 has basically two purposes. One is to provide more descriptive information about key duties in basically three bylaws that we're recommending: the moderator, planning board, and scenic roads. And the second purpose, and the more important purpose, is to establish a bylaw review committee. So we have spent a good amount of time looking at, you know, Holliston's bylaws, bylaws of other towns, and it was striking to us in a couple instances is how limited the narrative or the explanation of the basic duties of the individual officer or board was. And so what we're suggesting is basically to expand that explanation more to increase the transparency for the residents if they were to read a bylaw to have a much better understanding of what the responsibilities, the duties of, of that board or, or office was. And if you're, if you want to see the changes in terms of what was taken out and what is added in for the final bylaw, you could find that in your, I guess, the warrant report that you have, pages 29 to 31. So start with Amendment one, which is the Town Moderator. Actually, the current bylaw is one sentence and describes the least amount of information about the duties of the moderator possible. So basically, what we're recommending is an article that provides more clarifying information about the duties of the moderator. There are no additional duties provided beyond what is authorized by state law, and that'll be a phrase you'll hear from me for each one of these, except for the last one. And I'd like to say that the, this recommended bylaw is, has been approved by our current The second amendment is a similar situation with the Planning Board. The current bylaw description is far too limited for such an important board. It's just two sentences when you don't include the scenic roads. And this is a board that makes decisions that could have, you know, an impact on, on many of us in Holliston. So it's one where there ought to be at least more information available to those interested as to the duties and responsibilities. So we've, we have, again, added clarifying description, expanded the, the description of duties and responsibilities, all based on state law, no additional duties. The scenic road section was section three of, of the Planning Board's bylaw, but again, from our research, we, we thought it would be best to create a separate bylaw, you know, for scenic roads. And on the, Amendment two on the Planning Board by itself, the Planning Board has approved and endorsed that, that proposal. Section three on scenic roads basically expands it, added language is based again on state law, separate bylaw, gives scenic roads, I think, more prominence. Probably most of you didn't even know there was a scenic road section. And for a town like Holliston, that's important, so it's, so it gives it more prominence and provides more descriptive information. And the Planning Board has, has embraced that as well. So basically, the, the three examples, particularly the Planning Board and the Moderator, are used to say, this shouldn't be, but it's also maybe indicative of the fact that Holliston doesn't have a procedure for periodically reviewing its bylaws. And so these are really just examples of why this next amendment is needed, which is creation of a bylaw review committee. This would provide for the Select Board to establish a five-member bylaw review committee every five years. And the purpose would be to review the general bylaws to keep them current with the needs of the town. The Select Board would appoint two members of the, of the committee, the moderator, two members, and the Planning Board, one member. The Town Clerk would also be ex officio non-voting member because the Town Clerk is frankly the minister for the town of the bylaws and has the most institutional memory, so it would be serving as a real resource to this committee. The committee also would have the ability to make recommendations or offer some recommendations for any article at a town meeting that proposed changes to the bylaws. This would be analogous to the Planning Board making recommendations for zoning bylaws. So that is, that's basically the recommendation. You know, basically to provide more information to the residents of Holliston so that it's the work of these, of the, well, the moderators, the planning board, and the, and the scenic roads would be more understandable, more definitive, and that, you know, these are examples as to why there's a need for periodic change and therefore the bylaw review committee. So thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Shada? Yep.
Ken Shada, 676 Fisk. And I'm, just to be clear, I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident. It has nothing to do with the Finance Committee. I, I will apologize to Sam upfront by saying that I didn't read this thoroughly until this morning because I was busy trying to get the finances ready for today. But I have some problems with this, and I'll tell you what I have, what, where are the problems I find with this article. First of all, you said that you're really codifying, not changing any powers, you're codifying what exists in state law. Well, two years ago, I had a discussion with Henry Delicker about the time in which they put these bylaws together, and his exact statement to me was, "We intentionally did not put the state law text into our bylaws because every time the state law changes, it then requires a change to our bylaws." And when I looked at this and I looked at the text, what really bothered me was that literally the text you're proposing is a cut and paste of state law. So wouldn't it be more effective and better for the town to construct the bylaw with references to the appropriate statutes? In other words, I agree with you. People should know what the responsibilities are and should be able to find them. But rather than creating the situation where we take the state law, copy and paste into our bylaws, and then every time the state law changes, we have to change our bylaws, wouldn't it be better to rewrite these bylaws to say they have authority under these statutes, their duties are outlined here, and these statutes and so forth, so that in all perpetuity, when the state law changes, our bylaws change in concert with that, which is generally required because state law trumps our town bylaws? The other problem I have with this, so that, the first three, right, you made the statement that there is no substantive change, so I would say I'd want these to be rewritten to refer to the statutes directly rather than cutting and pasting the text. As far as the bylaw review committee, I think that's a very good idea, but here's where I have a little problem with that. In the bylaw you proposed, you say this is a committee that would be appointed at five-year intervals with the composition you, you give there. And what wasn't clear to me in reading this was, is this a committee that exists for one year because the Section 1 purpose says, appointed five-year intervals, special committee, no later than the year following the one in which the committee was formed, they have to report to follow-up town meeting any modifications they want to make? So that says to me, the committee exists for a year or so, a year plus or minus some months, to do the bylaw review, come back to town meeting and say, here's what we need to do in this five-year review of our bylaws, and then they basically disband. But then in the same bylaw, it says the committee also offers review and recommendation for all other, all other articles in the warrant for any town meeting which proposed an amendment. So that implies to me that this committee exists for five years. And if that's the case, then I would say, why would this board be treated where it's appointed for five years as opposed to doing what we do with every other board in town, which is have rolling membership so that there's continuity across the five-year period and continuity across the boundary of five years? Okay? Furthermore, the other thing that I really kind of take issue with is it says that even petition articles would be subject to review. And that's, and that's where I, I, you know, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to find it now. I didn't have it with me in front of me, but, but basically, there was language in here somewhere that said citizens' petitions would be subject to review, and I really don't think that's appropriate because, because citizens' petitions are the purest form of democracy, right? People should be able to get their stuff on the town meeting warrant to be discussed and shouldn't have to get by a committee that, that likes it or doesn't like it. They could certainly weigh in on whatever a citizen petition has, but I don't think it should be a mandatory part of review. But having said all that, that's, that's, those are my major issues with this. I'd also like to add that 18 months ago or so, we stood here in May of 2021, and there was a petition article for a five-person select board. Now, I'm not saying where I stand on that because I'm just talking administratively. And 18 months later, we get proposal for the Planning Board, Moderator, and a bylaw review committee, and scenic roads, all, the first three of which are all covered in state law, verbatim, as opposed to any opinion on a five-person select board. I know the petition wanted to come back, the petition, a different petitioner wanted to bring that back in May of this year and was shut down by the Town Council and the moderator, who refused to allow it because they felt there were technical issues with it. So I, I have to say that personally, I'm disappointed that this is what I'm seeing after 18 months. And because I think there are a lot of problems here that need to be redone, I would make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That, that motion is debatable. I'll hear from anybody who wants to speak heard on it.
I do.
Okay, Sam?
I don't really agree with Ken on most of what he said, so let me start. Providing more information and more description of the duties, I don't think it's going to require much work, and I do believe in most of these articles that the state law that applies is also included. We have the Town Clerk who follows this closely. We have- We have the town clerk who follows this closely, we have legal counsel that follows it closely, and frankly, given these particular state laws, there are not likely to be any changes or very little change that would be a problem. So it's always amendable at town meeting if you need to make a change, but I really question whether, for these three issues, that we'll see the legislature making changes that would require, you know, adjustments here at town hall, or in Holliston, but frankly, there is those in serving the town that are watching these issues, and it's not a problem if there is a change, but I doubt that there would be a change. As to the bylaw study committee, it's, yes, it's a five-member, appointed for five years. There is a requirement that after the first year, they make a recommendation, but it doesn't mean that they disband. It would serve, as the zoning board serves, you know, to review bylaw changes. It's to offer a recommendation, it doesn't have any authority to stop a citizen petition from going forward, but it can offer a recommendation, and that just better serves the town meeting to have more information. It doesn't quash the citizen petition, it doesn't change it at all, it just offers a As to, you know, the five-person, let me get this.
Select board.
Select board. What was?
You were charted as in May of 21, coming back with your recommendation.
Oh, yes, okay. We have, the governance committee really has spent a lot of time on the issue of whether there should be a three-member or a five-member select board. We have also looked at reports by other towns where they have created government study committees to look at just this issue. Our charge is a broader issue than that, but in the different studies that we've looked at, the average time for the committee to start its work and then come back with a recommendation is about 15 months. This is a complex issue, it's not so simple about, oh, you know, two more people, that would be good. It also has to deal with what are the responsibilities of the select board and what are the responsibilities of the town administrator, and should those be better realigned if we're going to have five people serving on the select board? So that's the kind of work we're doing right now. Yes, we've been dealing with other issues, not just this one issue, but I think in terms of our intention for the May town meeting is to be able to come forward with a recommendation for sort of enhancing the role of the town administrator, but with that, also having dealt with the issue of the alignment of duties between the town administrator and the select board. You know, we have a select board that is unusual in terms of most select boards, where they meet every week. Most select boards meet every other week. So part of that may be that the select board is getting too much involved with the day-to-day. We'd like to get to a point where, you know, the town administrator has more responsibility for the day-to-day operations and that the select board then is able to focus more on policy or strategic planning and policy development, which is a more appropriate role for them now. I think the, you know, the survey, the visiting Holliston survey, the second survey, provides more information to be looking at as well on these issues. So our intent is that we will deal with the issue of the town administrator, but at the same time, be able to make a recommendation regarding the five-member or three-member select board. And again, this is not a simple little issue once you really get involved with it and understand the complexity of it, and I think we're on target in terms of where we ought to be. So I think it'd be, we'd rather have a decision that is based on research and thoughtful consideration rather than just a knee-jerk reaction. Well, I think I've covered it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I hope you will support this.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Ken.
Vince?
Vin Murphy, 432 Norfolk Street. Just want to say something about having a, it's got nothing in that article regarding the survey or the bylaw committee regarding term, so it leaves it unknown. So the first time you mentioned was five years, and to me, it seems absurd to have an appointed committee for a five-year period with no rotations or anything like that. Our planning board has a five-year term, but one person cycles off or gets re-elected every five years. I would believe it's a possible thing to discuss, but I think it needs a little bit of work, that little amendment. The other thing to reiterate what Ken just suggested, everything's there as it is now, we just have to look at a different place, i.e. the state law. In this day and age where you have hyperlinks, you can just click on something and it takes you to the webpage where the state law is, I think it's redundant, and I think it's just, could potentially be a problem if the state ever changes anything of those different committees. I think it was a good attempt, but I think there's other places the governance committee should be focused on rather than these ticky-tacky things, in my opinion. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Sparrow?
Just a question for the governance committee, Ben Sparrow, 9 Forest Park Drive. The planning board and the moderator approved the bylaw changes, is that correct? Have they vetted them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
Mary Greendale, 198 Highland Street. Just very quickly, we used to have a zoning bylaws committee, it was a standing committee, it had five people on it. Yes, we had rotation of terms and that kind of thing, and it was just there because things changed or we wanted, you know, just to keep an eye on things. So it wouldn't be, this is just like old stuff coming back, no sense intended at all. But at any rate, we did always have one. I don't actually remember when it went away. So it was actually the first committee it was on way back.
Ken, you want to be heard again?
Sure. Just very quickly, one thing, one other thing I forgot to mention was, we have zoning bylaws and we have general bylaws. And the other thing I have an issue with, with the way this bylaw committee is constructed is it's got a member of the planning board, which makes sense because there are some bylaws that require planning input, but the vast majority of our general bylaws have nothing at all to do with zoning and nothing at all to do with the planning board. So I also would, you know, encourage them to look a little bit more at the composition of the committee, where they consult with the planning board on the general bylaws. The planning board obviously is integral to the zoning bylaws, so.
Any further discussion? Tina? Yep.
Tina Hyne, 142 Union Street. I guess I have a question for the finance committee. I think in the past, well, I have a question, it's about the idea of a committee reviewing a citizen petition. It's my understanding that in the past, the finance committee, although not often, has reviewed citizen petitions that have a financial implication. It doesn't happen often, I can't recall actually the last time, that was my question, I can't recall the last time that it happened, but I know there have been instances where a citizen petition has a financial implication and the finance committee weighs in, and we trust the good judgment of our finance committee. I personally do not see an issue with a governance committee weighing in on a review of a citizen petition that makes a change. I think it's good practice, and I think we accept it from the finance committee on financial implications, and we would accept it from the governance committee on a bylaw, a citizen petition related to a bylaw. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Walter McLennan, 29 School Street. I wanted to ask the moderator, is there one vote for this motion that's put before us, or are there four for the four parts? I'm unclear.
We're presently debating one motion to indefinitely postpone the article.
If we were to vote on the article, would there be just one vote on the article or on the four portions of it?
As it stands right now, there'd be one vote in the article. The first vote is going to be whether to indefinitely postpone, and if that prevails, then the article is gone. If that's defeated, then we'd be voting on the main article, which would then be subject to amendment if somebody chose to make a motion to amend it.
Thank you very much. I will be supporting indefinite postponement for the following reason. There are four separate issues here, and each of them deserves discussion. We're really not able to do that tonight. We might discuss the scenic roads, or we might discuss the planning board, and I'd rather have in the future, as the government study committee presents things, that we'd be able to look at the individual items and the citizenry can respond to it. So I'll be supporting indefinite postponement. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Barbara?
I'd like to make an amendment to this article based on what Mr. McLennan just said.
Excuse me, Barbara, right now, we're on the motion for indefinite postponement.
Okay, so I can't speak to an amendment, can I?
I think your comments would be better addressed to whether you want to move, support indefinite postponement or not, but I will.
Okay.
I'll show you the courtesy a former step representative should be extended. And if you would like to speak on it, then I want you to speak on it, but I want you to understand we're going to vote first on the motion to indefinitely postpone, but go ahead.
Okay. And I will say that I would be against indefinite postponement because I'd be more in favor of making an amendment. It seems to me that at least some of these articles are worthwhile pursuing and passing. The first two, I think, are, well, let me, I don't know the numbers, so I think the two that describe the planning board and the town moderator are worthwhile passing for this reason. I think that bylaws should reflect for the townspeople what the town does, and even though you can go to your computer or you can go to your cell phone and look up chapter and verse of state law, I think it's fair to say most people would not do that. And this gives them a much better description, a much better understanding of what those boards do. And I think that it's a kind of a long shot, that these are boards that have been around for a very long time that are going to see substantial change in state law. It might happen maybe once every 10 years, but I think it's very doubtful that there'll be any substantial changes. So I think it's good to have those descriptions. It tells people, you know, this is what this board does. If I have a problem, I can see right in the bylaw that that's the person I go to. I think the finance committee has a good point around, there seems to be a lot of confusion around the one that creates a bylaw. General bylaws, citizen petition, there are a lot of issues there, so I would not recommend that we go forward with that one. And as far as I can tell, this, I happen to live on a scenic road, and I think that the scenic road one, which we haven't discussed at all, is worthwhile as well. It puts a little more teeth into it, it's a better description of exactly what the planning board does, and it, I think, involves, Sam, does it not, a couple more boards that weigh in? The conservation commission and one other board, I've forgotten which one, that can have some say around what does or doesn't happen on a scenic road. Excuse me. So my amendment would be to go forward with three and not with the bylaw one.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest, Barbara, if you will, that we allow the, we've heard your argument, your argument is opposed to indefinite postponement. I'm going to call for a vote on that rather quickly, I think it's been debated fairly, and then if that motion fails, then we return to the main motion, and I'll entertain your motion to amend it by deleting that provision that deals with the review committee. How's that? Okay, you're welcome. Any further discussion? All right, seeing that, we'll move to a vote on the motion to indefinitely postpone. That requires a majority vote, I'll do it on a voice vote. If I have a question, I'll call for hand count, but if it's close, we'll have a hand count, in my view, and if it's not, then we'll just, we'll deal with the outcome. So again, all those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We're going to have a hand count on that, please, if we could. You have, we have counters? All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please raise your hand.
Barbara.
Barbara, you a counter?
Yeah, she's got the bad middle. Oh, I think she just wanted to give her vote.
Again, this is, those of you in favor of indefinite postponement.
19. 1-5?
Yeah.
34.
Okay. And all those opposed, raise your hand, please. Where's Barbara Gardner? Barbie, you're making life difficult for me. We have to bring in neutral observers. All those opposed, right, you had your hands up in the back for Barbara to count? Thank you.
7.
The vote in favor of the motion indefinitely postponed is 101, those opposed are 46, so the motion to indefinitely postpone carries. Article 12, Community Preservation Committee, sponsored by the CPC at an estimated cost of $10,167, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money for the following uses: historical society, cleaning and restoration of 12 oil paintings, and framing of four oil paintings; the reserve use would be historic resources reserved, $5,500; historical society, restoration of two exterior doors on the L of the Ace of Whiting House, sunset 12 months; historic resources reserved, $4,000; Eagle Skull, reimburse Mr. Savage to supplies and materials for an Eagle Skull project, and materials for an Eagle Skull project in Poitras conservationally and done in April of 2022 from the general reserve, $667. The motion is moved that this article be approved as presented in the warrant with the historical society appropriation to be subject to the execution of grant agreements. to be subject to the execution of grant agreements as appropriate. The FinCom...is there a second to the motion? The FinCom will make a recommendation at town meeting. Ken, do you have a recommendation on this? Thank you.
Yes. Prior to this town meeting, we met and voted to support, recommend favorable actions subject to the execution of the agreements as the CPC outlined.
$10,167?
Yes. And the vote was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Unanimous vote. Any discussion? If not, then all those in favor of the motion is read? So voted? Opposed, so voted. Thank you. Article 13, Water Meters Replacement, sponsored by the Select Board at an estimated cost of $905,000 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for costs associated with replacing or upgrading software and hardware related to the town's water meters or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $905,000 from the water meter fee account for the purpose stated in the article. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $905,000 from water meter fee account for the purpose stated in the article, 6-0, with Mr. Robinson absent. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, so voted. Article 14, Culvert System Improvements, Central Street to Bullitt Street and Fifth Street Culvert Supplemental Appropriations, sponsored by the Select Board at an estimated cost of $500,000 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of replacing water mains in the area of Central Street and Bullitt Street to provide bidirectional flow and for culvert improvements under Fifth Street or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $500,000 from the water infrastructure fee account for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? The Finance Committee recommends that the town appropriate $500,000 from the water infrastructure fee account for the purpose stated in the article, 6-0. Vote in favor with Mr. Robinson absent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, so voted. Water Treatment Plant Improvements, Article 15, sponsored by the Select Board with an estimated cost of $816,000 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for upgrading filter media and control panels at the Dopping Brook Water Treatment Plant and replace the steel doors at the well number four water treatment plant or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $816,000 from the water retained earnings for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? Thank you. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $816,000 from water retained earnings for the purposes stated in the article, 6-0, again with Mr. Robinson absent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 16, Stormwater Management, MS 4, Year 5, sponsored by the Select Board at an estimated cost of $95,200 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for engineering, consulting, or construction services related to compliance with EPA and Mass DEP Municipal Stormwater Management Regulations, MS 4, take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $95,200 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? Thank you. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $95,200 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article, 6-0, with Mr. Robinson absent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, that's unanimous. A Houghton Pond Dam Design Engineering Partial, sponsored by the Select Board at an estimated cost of $56,000 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for design, engineering, and environmental evaluation services to determine the long-term strategy to addressing the poor condition of the Houghton Pond Dam or take any action relative thereto. The motion is that the town appropriate $56,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? Thank you. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $56,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article, 6-0, Mr. Robinson absent. Any discussion? Let me say, I do have suggested explanation for these articles, and the town administrator has gone to pains to present the explanations for me. But the interest of conserving time, I'm not sharing them with you unless there's a debate that's offered. I want to be respectful of your time. But I also want to acknowledge the work that Mr. Hearn did, preparing me to share information with you if need be. So we'll proceed to a vote, but I'm better armed with information if discussion comes up. I want you to know that. So any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, so voted unanimously. A Public Works Facility Design Engineering Partial, sponsored by the Select Board at an estimated cost of $500,000 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for design and engineering services, environmental testing, including soil sampling to determine the best location for a future DPW facility, compile necessary information for the potential decommissioning of two current sites, and create renderings of a facility to be presented to a future town meeting for consideration or take any action relative thereto. The suggested...the motion, not suggested, the motion is moved that the town appropriate $500,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? Let me offer the explanation here for the edification of town meeting. The following authorization from May 21 Annual Town Meeting, Article 33, the town engaged Weston and Sampson for a feasibility study that determined the town's future needs for public works will require a roughly 45,000-square-foot facility to meet requirements of various divisions: water, highway, snow and ice, and grounds. While the task of determining the need has been accomplished, the major roadblock to addressing the town's crumbling DPW facilities on Arch Street and Central Street is the difficulty of determining the most appropriate site. A two-page handout from Weston and Sampson summarized conditions and needs is available online. As there is no agreed-upon site selection as of the fall town meeting, a significant pro-con list for numerous sites, it appears that further environmental analysis and engineering is needed to finalize the path forward. To answer the outstanding questions, which extend beyond the feasibility study phase, this article requests funds for a partial approach to design and engineering. The article is intentionally not committing to the entire cost of the design and engineering process until such time as a final site is selected and ready to be sent to the town meeting. The request for proposals related to potential private site acquisition was due on October 7th and will be discussed in the following article, where the article would not allow for full evaluation of any viable sites, private or town-owned. We're going to require a majority vote. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $500,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second to the motion? It's open for discussion? Seeing none? No, I'm just kidding. Go right ahead, sir. Just a little levity. Yeah. We actually encourage debate, okay? I'm not trying to discourage it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Good evening. Matthew Leach, 10 Mill Street. I'm here today to express my opposition and ask my fellow citizens to join me in opposing a new DPW facility as defined in the initial study that was performed for our town. While I realize that we're just talking about an amendment today to continue that study, and there's another amendment after this to look at the potential for acquiring a site, I believe that now is the time to make certain that the proper questions are raised and by our citizens of this town, and that guardrails are put in place to ensure that the capabilities that we're building are right size to meet both the current and the future needs of our town. The core of my concern is the overall cost, the scale, and the scope of this project. It's a significant undertaking for our town at a time when there's both looming financial challenges ahead and also other pressing projects that could benefit the citizens of this town. I'd like to lay out a few of my concerns for you all that I've observed after reviewing the study that was performed. I'm not texting here. I'm, you know, I'm reviewing my notes. A little humor, if you don't mind. All right. The new facility requires a significant investment, and we need to make sure that the scope is in line with the needs of this town. Let's focus on the must-haves. I know there's OSHA compliance, you know, things that we actually have to do to be able to run this facility. But I want us to focus on those must-haves, not on the nice-to-haves, not on the things that wouldn't it be great if. So I want to make sure that we're targeted and focused in how we're spending our money. I think overall, as I read this study, there was an assumption that the DPW staff would be growing. I think it was moving from 25 to 36. I might have my numbers wrong, and if someone has them, please correct me. That's like a 45% increase in headcount. And I'm curious to better understand, you know, one of these staffing changes ultimately funded? And what additional services, capabilities are going to be offered by the departments if these changes are ultimately put into place? You know, how is that initial capacity going to be used? And I want to make sure that the facility that we're building is going to be necessary for, again, the scope and scale of our town. And we're not building capability and capacity that will never actually be put to use. I also observe that there appears to be little to no discussion about the current facilities. They talk a lot about the challenges, which I completely understand that you have to do if you're going to be looking at a study like this. But I'd like to understand more of the trade-offs. How can we upgrade the existing facilities? What can be done to make sure that they're compliant? You know, so that we're not building net new and actually leveraging the assets the town already has in place? There's also an underlying assumption that I believe the DPW is going to be kind of operating, you know, as-is, for things like fleet maintenance. I think it's a great example of this. You know, there's vehicles in this town, not just with the DPW facility, the water facility. Have we explored, how can we combine? How can we, you know, bring things like perhaps fire, police, together for capabilities like fleet maintenance? Reduce the overall burden on the town? Or are there opportunities for us to look at local businesses that might have the ability to service these vehicles so that we're not building capability just for the use of one department or for the use of our town, but perhaps providing, you know, opportunities to work with more local partners who could do the same type of work for us? I lost my spot. You know, as I read the study, one of the primary drivers... I was actually on a board out front as I walked in. I think it was the second bullet. It said, you know, they're looking to be able to build a facility that could house all the vehicles internally. It's a great idea, right? We want to preserve the assets that our town has. But my question is, you know, how does this ultimately extend the useful life? Has anyone done the business case to better understand, you know, how, you know, sheltering these vehicles year-round ultimately is going to benefit our town? And hopefully, you know, ultimately lengthen their time of service and shorten the time required for replacement? Ultimately, there should be a business case there, right? We should be able to save money for the town that perhaps could be used to fund, you know, things like facility changes. So, you know, overall, you know, I would just like to add, you know, I think finally, you know, with some of the, you know, the macroeconomic conditions, the headwinds that I think we're all facing, you know, is it...we have to ask ourselves if this is the right time for the town to take on such a monumentous $20 to $30 million capital project? And especially when, you know, there are many potential projects facing our town, I mean, the building that we're in right now, that could also benefit from such work. You know, I hope that you all will take my questions under consideration, and as a town, will make a responsible decision for the financial future of all of our citizens. So thank you for the opportunity today to raise my concerns. I hope you'll take them under account as we look at this amendment and the next. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? Sure. Travis?
Sorry, I have a little obstacle course over there. Okay, so I don't think I got all of the questions down there, but I believe that all of the questions that I heard were answered in the Weston and Sampson feasibility study to a certain degree. And I think what you see in Article 18 here is the fact that before the Select Board is comfortable moving ahead and bringing a site-specific project to town meeting, there's other questions, specifically environmental, but some others that we really need more information on. I think there's a number of sites specifically that needs to be discussed, some of which answers the gentleman's questions. But really, I like that many of the questions were related to specifically the need. So I will ask that the IT director pull up the Weston and Sampson presentation from June 2020, because I think that really answers to the need for which I don't think there is much of a question. If you...most people don't see these two facilities. One is on Arch Street, one is on Central Street. And not many people really view them as facilities. I don't think many people even know what they do. The facility that you'd probably see more is the one on Central Street, which is the water division. It gets a little bit less use based on personnel. The one on Arch Street does a number of different things for the community. It is where the highway operates out of, which is also snow and ice in the winter, a major function that keeps the town moving. Additionally, the new grounds division is there, and it's also the fueling station for all the facilities throughout town, whether it's police, fire, schools, for the buses that are owned or vans that are owned. So it really gets quite a bit of use. And I think, you know, I think Weston and Sampson did a phenomenal job in their report. While they weren't able to provide the Select Board with a site that they felt they could bring to the town in October, I think that the need was clearly established in that report. I think, just to answer some of the questions of, are we sure it's the right scale and scope? I personally feel that it is. I think what they started out with was, here is what we would do if we were starting from scratch and designing a DPW facility in 2022. And then they took into account that every square foot is cost, square footage in building is cost. And then they tried to shrink that, remove things as much as possible, and get to the needs, right? So the total design went from about 51,000 square feet to about 45,000 square feet. They have looked at the program itself in terms of all of the needs across departments, but specifically for DPW as well, and looked at, if there is a not-perfect site, how that program itself, all of the needs, can be addressed on different sites, right? We all know, whether it's a site that the town currently owns or if it's one that the town might purchase, we deal with wetlands, we deal with conservation land. That's something that is always going to be part of any building in the town of Holliston. And so they looked at what the needs are, and they tried to fit that onto multiple sites so people could conceptualize what that looks like. So if you don't mind, Chris, if you could go down, I think there's a few pictures of the current facility. So this is just to give you an example of the need. I think we're, you know, what Weston and Sampson found, obviously, they talked to a number of different departments and also the DPW to look at what we're currently...what we've been doing, what we're currently doing, and where DPWs are going in the future. And so generally speaking, the answer, as you look at the pictures, and I think I said on HCAT, you know, a picture is worth 1,000 words. These two facilities, both of them, are not sites that would be rehabbed. They would need to be torn down and rebuilt. So Weston and Sampson's general feedback on that was that is not going to be cost-effective to tear down and rebuild two different buildings. But I would say that I don't think that that's been ruled out. Again, with the idea that this is not a site-specific question that you're being posed with tonight. It is saying that in any of the scenarios that move forward, for example, let's say that the Central Street site, which Weston and Sampson did try to lay out the 45,000-square-foot facility on, and they came up with a creative solution on Central Street, for example, a site that is currently owned by the town and operating as a DPW facility, and they found that they could fit the whole program by creating a campus-style outcome where part of the building would be in the front. You would need a bridge that goes over the wetlands that bisect the site, and then you'd create the other building for offices, et cetera. Now, it's possible, when we progress further, that that is the best option, but we don't know that right now. They did not find that Arch Street was viable for a future site based on everything in that area. They looked at a site behind Pine Crest, which the Select Board has received quite a bit of feedback on, and I think is one of the sites that can fit the program but has a number of questions that need to be answered before the Select Board would be comfortable moving ahead with it. They also looked at Axton Cross, or 20 Cross Street, excuse me. People know it as Axton Cross, which is currently in Land Court. And I think if the town were to pursue that site, we would need to do extensive environmental testing, which is part of the reason that having this article that's in front of you tonight will be exceptionally helpful. And then additionally, at the time, and this was... I was going to discuss under Article 19, because we are looking for feedback from the community, although not if Article 18 did not pass. Article 19 essentially asks if there is an appetite to look at privately-owned sites that we may have to acquire. And one of those sites that was available at the time of the feasibility study was a site in the Lowland Industrial Park. We since did an RFP to determine if there's any other viable privately-owned sites that somebody may be willing to sell to town, which, again, I would discuss under Article 19. So I think, just to answer the questions, as far as I'm concerned or from my perspective as an administrator of this type of project, I think Weston and Sampson did a phenomenal job in answering many of the gentleman's questions. The report is 200 pages, which I understand most people don't find approachable, nor do I. But I think it is comprehensive, and it answers the questions that were asked here earlier. So I don't want people to feel like they are...those questions were not answered. But what we did do, because, again, 200 pages is not necessarily approachable, is we have a two-page handout, which is available out in the lobby, including a blown-up version in color, and then that's also available online. So I'd be happy to answer any other specific questions. But I think many of the best management practices that the resident mentioned were addressed through the Weston and Sampson study. study. And I think at this stage, to continue to move forward and address two failing facilities that are presenting a number of different liabilities for the town, this is where we are right now with Article 18 that asks you all to consider not a full design engineer, engineering question, but a partial one to continue making progress, but to bring back to a future town meeting, hopefully, in my opinion, May of 2023. But I can't guarantee that based on, you know, the, the information that we'll get back, that, that would continue to move us forward, because these sites, they do need to be addressed. They are well past useful life. We have some time, but I can't guarantee how much. And I think that we need a plan in place and, and without further funding, to answer some of those questions, we'll end up sort of continuing to kick the can and there's really just not much more road to kick the can down. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, sir. I'll get you next, Ben.
Jay Leary, 146 Karen Circle. I have a question for the Select Board through the moderator. Is any of the funding that's talked about here, talking about decommissioning the existing sites, and do we know if we have any issues with environmental issues going forward with possible decommissioning of any of the two sites that are currently being used for DPW? Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead, Ben. You want to answer his question, Ben, and then you can make your own comments, too?
I can.
Thank you.
Ben Sparrow, 9 Forest Park Drive. To answer Mr. Leary's question, the, the purpose of this money is to do exact, one of the things is to do exactly that, to look at decommissioning those sites and to understand the scope of any environmental impact for any future use of those sites. Two other points I wanted to make quickly to piggyback on what the Town Administrator had mentioned. One of the things that were, I'm personally concerned about is that the state has the potential to walk in and say, you need to decommission these facilities and you need to come up with a solution immediately. And these facilities are not in good shape. They're in pretty, pretty bad shape and it's disappointing and it's unacceptable for a town of, a modern town like ours to, to have those sites. And the other point to make here, too, is that we have combined the DPW facilities, water and highway, so we have redundant facilities. Why do we need, we don't need two locker rooms, we don't need two break rooms, we don't need two facilities to, to harbor the vehicles. The intention is to bring those together to reduce that redundancy, because it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to have two. So, that's part of the purpose of this exercise. So, the $500,000 is meant to do the studies and to answer some additional questions about the existing sites and any potential site that is chosen, so we can make an informed choice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Sure.
Katie Connors, 14 Andrew Lane. I just wondered if someone could address the question that was raised about the increased staffing. It did sound like a large jump and I'm mindful of that idea of being really careful of the scale at which we do things at the same time, recognizing that it certainly does seem way past time to address the inadequacies of the facilities that we have now. And maybe you could also speak to, for those of us who haven't been as attentive as we should, the, where this project ranks in relation to other large-scale. It, it feels like it's obviously one of the most egregious spots that needs addressing, but I'm sure there are other public buildings that people have in mind that need work and maybe we could just get a sense of the perspective of where it falls in priority.
Sure. I'll ask you.
Okay, so for the staff question, which I apologize, I didn't answer from the gentleman's question either. So, what Weston and Sampson did was sit down with the DPW Director, Facilities Manager, the, the town, the, the Head Mechanic, the Highway Superintendent, who's the Deputy DPW Director, who had actually just changed positions at the time through a retirement, including a number of the other departments that interact with DPW, and tried to answer the question of, if we're going to create a facility, let's make sure that it's, you know, it's, it's going to meet our actual needs. Now, as I said, that led to having room for some positions that then were removed once we had to find cost efficiencies and, and the, the design went from 51,000 square feet to, to 45. So, some of the ideas behind expansion of personnel, one is in May, at this past May Annual Town Meeting, there was support for two labor positions being added to improve our grounds division, which have now been staffed and, and we're off and running with a new foreman, which was an internal promotion, and a grounds division that we, that we previously did not have, which I think Town Meeting saw the need for, Finance Committee supported, Select Board put forward. And so, that is an additional staff that has not been in place previously. So, that information went to Weston and Sampson and they had that ahead of time. The other things that we looked at, currently, the town of Holliston does not have a staff Town Engineer. And then, in fact, I would point out, as I've discussed with the Finance Committee many times and we, we come back to sort of every budget cycle, a, a number of costs that you see here as one-time costs are really costs that theoretically could be covered by a Town Engineer. That, that conversation will continue to happen and I'm sure future town meetings will discuss it, most likely through the budget process. Weston and Sampson did look at the idea of if the town were to have in-house Town Engineering Services in the future, where would those sit? Theoretically, they would be in this DPW facility. That was removed in the, in the reduction in size, because the, the response was essentially between Town Hall, 1750, which the community also owns, 1750 Washington Street, excuse me, and some others, that we would be able to find a site for a Town Engineer. And you could argue that a Town Engineer should sit with the Town Planner rather than DPW. Every town does that a little differently. So, that was really the, the back and forth on the questions. Weston and Sampson tried to nail down, what does this community need for the next 50 years? These facilities are well over 50 years old, but that, that's sort of the question that they were, they were tasked with answering. I don't think outside of those, those things that you're seeing a lot of growth, other than the idea that these services become more and more complex, and that may or may not lead to additional staffing, but certainly not at an exponential scale by any means. And I apologize, that was the first question and the second question was...
Priority list.
Prioritizing, yes. And so, I, I completely understand and, and as a, as the Town Administrator, I get that this is not the project that most people want to be focused on. People want to invest in schools, people want to invest in, you know, community centers and those types of things. At the end of the day, that's why Weston and Sampson started out every presentation to the Select Board and the presentations that are online and the report itself by highlighting the fact that this is a, a service level within town government that most people don't recognize that they need until they don't have. It's one that doesn't have a natural constituency that's standing behind it, pushing forward change, and that's really a task that sort of falls to the Select Board. I, I completely understand that this isn't where most people would want to prioritize their tax dollars. At the same point, you know, we get a lot of feedback, especially in the winter, when we improved snow and ice in the last two winters, that it's made a huge improvement, right? And so, all of the changes that we're looking to make are all to improve quality of life for individuals. Snow and ice is just one example that most people can, can most easily think of, an example in their minds, where you, you need those roads open to be able to use, but it's really, it's improving a number of different things as well, including grounds division, which impacts the schools, all, all town facilities. And so, you know, I, I understand that, you know, in terms of prioritization, and I think one of the things that envisioning future Holliston is going to be exceptionally helpful for, as we get to later in the, the evening, is really determining where our priorities are across a number of different needs. Unfortunately, as I look at the DPW facility, it's one that we can't weigh on what do we want to do? It's, it, these are two facilities that have, and I don't, I, the kick in the can, I use all the time, I understand, I, I got to come up with another one, but, you know, the answer is we just really can't select something that we'd prefer to do first. These are things that need to be addressed through the town. So, I don't mean to not answer the question directly, but I think the answer is I understand any frustration from somebody saying, I would rather address a need for a, a school or a library, but this is, you know, the answer is that these DPW facilities need to be addressed. So, that, I'm prioritizing it based on need from, from where I sit. But I don't know if there's somebody else who'd like to answer from where they consider from prioritization. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
Hi. Kevin Conley, 44 Cranberry Lane. The Highway Department, as it used to be, is a disaster. It's a mess. It should have been done 20 years ago. So, that's a big priority, big priority. The town needs it a big time. And Weston and Sampson, looking at all the priorities, how about the fire station? It's a beautiful building we have down there on the street downtown, but what if you combined part of the fire station with the new DPW and you can combine all those resources? You talked about the locker rooms, et cetera, maintenance, all inside one roof, one parking lot. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the article, the, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. My eyesight's been questioned before, sir, so I take it personally.
So, I guess, just one question I have...
For, for the folks at home, please re-identify yourselves.
Oh, I'm sorry. Matt H., 10 Mill Street.
Thank you.
So, I, again, I understand that we're just talking about the amendment here to further the study, but there's also the idea of procuring land. I'm looking at the overall cost of 20 to 30 million. I'd like to raise the, the question out of the Select Board or the Finance Committee. What would the plan be to ultimately fund the entirety of the project? How would that be approached by the town?
If you'd like, Ben.
Ben Sparrow, 9 Forest Park Drive. That's actually one of the article, the elements of discussion for the infrastructure group between the Finance Committee and the Select Board is to come to some sort of a, an understanding and a consensus. It's complicated, there's a lot of moving parts with some of the other projects, but the intention is for the, to come together, to come to a, a reasonable financial process. Nothing has been set, nothing is solid at this point, but it would be, you know, it could be some within the, the omnibus, there might be other options, but we have to explore what we can and come to an agreement. So, there's nothing set yet, is basically what I'm saying.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to a vote on the article. The motion is that the town appropriate 500,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Ben Second calls a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted unanimously. Article 19, this is a non-binding question. It's been referenced by earlier speakers this evening, but it's seeking to gauge the sentiment of town meeting with respect to our desire to purchase or not purchase a piece of land to house this DPW facility. I'll be calling for a handful count at the end, because the Select Board would like some measure of certainty with respect to what the town's sentiment is, rather than just to pass or fail on it. So, the article is to see, it's a non-binding question to determine support for the private site acquisition for future public works facilities sponsored by the Select Board, to see if the town will determine through a non-binding vote for the purpose of providing feedback to the Select Board whether purchasing a privately-owned site should be considered for a future DPW site at the estimated cost presented to Town Meeting based on responses to the town's request for proposals, RFP for the purchase of real property, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved at the town vote to consider the acquisition of a privately-owned industrial property projected at approximately 3 to 4 million dollars, should an appropriate site be identified for said purpose and to endorse the Select Board's continued review of such a purpose. I assume, because it's a non-binding question, Ken, that the FinCom did not weigh in with a vote on this?
That is correct.
Did I have that right? Okay, and I have, I have that correctly. So, is there a second to the motion?
Right.
Okay, it's open for discussion. Anyone want to make a presentation on it initially? Yes? Travis? Thank you.
Okay, I believe he skipped ahead, because I did have just two articles, just two items to, to lead into, if we hadn't had any discussion on 18, but I think Mr. Leach's questions led to a good discussion on that. So, I just want to highlight sort of some of the discussion that we just had as it relates to this question. This is really the Select Board looking for feedback now. Any decision that you're making will come back to you in the future when dollars are actually tied to it hypothetically, and the information that, that the Select Board collects now goes into further discussion as we continue to work with Weston and Sampson or if another consultant were selected for further discussion through the public procurement process. So, I, I sort of lead in here with the, the need being evident, but we just had that discussion, so I shouldn't have led off with that. The, we do have at least one viable site per Weston and Sampson that meets all of the needs. As I mentioned, there were some gymnastics that they did to make other sites potentially meet the program, and so, all of that is still to be discussed. The Board is looking for feedback from Town Meeting, which is what we're going to discuss at the moment, and I'm just going to give a brief history of the private site options to date to, before I lead into the final question. So, when Weston and Sampson did the feasibility study earlier in 2022, there was one site that met the need that was on the market at the time. It was located at 56 Lowland Street. I refer to it as the Flex Ed facility, because that's the sign I see when I pass it, but it, it is now off the market. But it provided a good data point for us to consider here at an approximate market, approximate market value of 3 million dollars. It had a facility on it that was 44,000 square feet and a four-acre site. Go to the next slide, Chris. So, this is the map itself, which is found in the report and the presentations that are online. And so, these are the five sites that were essentially considered at the time of feasibility. We have since, we'll, we'll have the ability to send them more sites, but really, as we want to get along, as I mentioned earlier, for environmental testing, et cetera, we will need additional funding, which was under Article 18. So, for the private site options that were looked at, this is the entirety of the list. The first two are the existing DPW facilities, Highway at 63 Arch Street, Water at Central Street, and then the Prentice Street site is the one behind Pinecrest that received a lot of feedback. Additional two sites that are privately owned, as I mentioned, Axton Cross is in Land Court that is going to go through its normal legal process. Theoretically, that could be out of Land Court in the next three to six months, at which point, the town may have the option to take it at no cost. But part of that, again, will be the environmental evaluation, as we know that a number of activities that took place on that site in the past are why it is in Land Court to begin with. And then finally, 56 Lowland Street was on, which was on the market at the time. You go to the next slide, Chris. So, through that process, essentially what, when the Select Board reviewed those five sites and was unable to say that they would be in favor of putting forward a site to this October Town Meeting, the next step that was taken was to go and solicit any private sites that were not actually on the market. And so, the town followed the legal procurement process and issued an RFP for the purchase of private property. That closed on October 7th with one respondent, which was also in the Lowland Industrial Park, at a cost of approximately 4.5 million dollars. Well, I'm not going to get into the validity of either of those private sites right now. Really, what I want to point out tonight, before we get into the question, is we now have essentially two data points. I don't think, and especially based on my conversations with the Finance Committee and the Select Board, that there is anything that rules out issuing another RFP, which is a request for proposal, or continuing to look for any potential sites that are available on, on the private market. But right now, those are the two data points that we have. And so, if you could go to the final slide, Chris. Really, the question that we're looking for feedback on tonight is, as the gentleman mentioned, at a price point based on square footage in today's market, which Weston and Sampson put a, a great deal of data behind how they came to that number, and it's in the report and the presentations, at a, at a 20 to 30 million dollar cost for a facility, is there an appetite to purchase a site with the data points that we currently have? So, we have two sites that have been brought to our attention, cost between 3 to 4 million dollars. I just want to add a little bit of context to this conversation, because I follow along with other communities in the area. And so, for example, the town of Medway right now is looking at purchasing a site. They felt like everybody was on board with them buying the site, the site finally became available, and then they, they reached opposition. So, again, this is not binding you to anything to vote for this. It is really asking your opinion now and you will certainly be, we will certainly be checking in with you again in the future, should a site become viable and, and you're in favor of it. The question is specifically, do you as a voter feel compelled to consider market-available private site options for a DPW facility at an estimated cost of 3 to 4 million dollars in the current market? It's really just to get a, a feeler for where Town Meeting is now, so that that information can go in as we continue to move ahead and vet sites. And so, I, I thank you all for, for participating, partaking in this. It's a little unusual. I know we don't usually put forward non-binding questions, but it's really just a, you know, we only meet twice a year. It's really just an effort to get feedback now to inform the process. So, I can answer any other specific questions, but I just wanted to frame the question. Thank you.
Great. Great, thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Sonia?
Paul Sonia, 29 Church Street. Just to point a clarification, I think I heard when you read the motion that it was going to be limited to industrially zoned sites. I don't see that anywhere in the text, but if that's the case, does that eliminate consideration of Prentice Street or any other sites that are not industrially zoned? In the motion, I think you read that.
The motion was for a privately owned industrial property.
So that's not industrially zoned, that's just industrial property?
Well, the motion, the motion asked that the town vote to consider the acquisition of a privately owned industrial property. But it's a non-binding, it's a non-binding, Paul, so. Your question is correct. That's what the motion said, Paul.
Ben Sparrow, Nine Forest Park Drive. The, looking at industrial sites, yes, to find a site that's large enough to accommodate DPW facility. The Prentice Street site is town-owned. That was why it was part of the consideration. And it doesn't make it the right site, but it just means we asked Weston and Sampson to look at town-owned site, properties, and that was one of them that was large enough to accommodate the program.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, John?
John Gagden, 110 Norfolk Street. I got a question on Cross Street. If that was chosen, or if it could be chosen, could we get help for cleaning that land up and we would resolve that issue? That's just a question. Sometimes they do have funding for that. Thank you.
Yeah, Travis, can you take that? Sure.
Can you hear me? I just don't want to jump over the obstacle course again. The answer is yes. We're in contact with EPA in anticipation of that coming out of Land Court. Generally speaking, it's under a brownfield program that EPA is aware of that site and will continue to work with them so that we're in good position whether that's eventually taken by the town or if it becomes another private use in the future, that EPA certainly would be involved in any mitigation efforts.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, if not, we'll move forward then on this non-binding question. The motion was moved that the town vote to consider the acquisition of a privately owned industrial property projected at approximately three to four million dollars should an appropriate site be identified for said purpose and to endorse the select board's continued review of such purpose. We'll take a voice vote, and if it's unanimous, I'm content with that. If it's not, then we'll have a hand vote so the board has an accurate reflection of town meeting sentiment. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 20, sidewalk and ramp repairs and reconstruction sponsored by the select board and estimated cost of 1 million. And the only reason I'm joking about it, it's a non-binding method. I think the board got the sense it was near unanimous. If it was an actual vote on an article that made, had a binding effect, then I wouldn't be so cavalier about that. Just to let you know my thinking on it. Article 20, sidewalk and ramp repairs and reconstruction sponsored by the select board, estimated cost 1 million 250,000 dollars to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money for localized repairs or reconstruction of existing sidewalks or ramps, including the labor, cost of materials and disposal of materials, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the town appropriate 1 million 250,000 dollars from the capital expenditure fund for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? Thank you. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate 1 million 250,000 dollars from the capital expenditure fund for the purpose stated in this article, 6-0, with Mr. Robinson absent. This requires a two-thirds vote as we're using capital expenditure funds. Any discussion? Yes.
Jay Larry, 146 Karen Circle. Is there any geographic area where we're discussing this, or is it just generally sidewalk repair throughout the town? If someone could answer that?
Ben Sparrow, Select Board. To answer Mr. Larry's question, there, it's based on a pedestrian side, I forget the exact title of it. It's a Stantec report that outlet examined all of our sidewalks, and they gave it a priority ranking based on a number of factors, including condition, proximity to services, to things like downtown, schools, to parks, the rail trail, I think that was all of them. So it was based on the items that were closer to more of those parts of town would be prioritized higher if they needed to be repaired, and something that was further out of town would be prioritized lower. So it spreads over geography based on the priority ranking, and that full list with the priority ranking is in the report that's found on the town website.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 21, feasibility study for public library facility. Oh, excuse me. It was two-thirds, yes. Yeah, I think it was unanimous. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Article 21, feasibility study for public library facility sponsored by the library trustees at an estimated cost of 12,000 dollars to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money for a feasibility study to create a facilities plan in meeting the current and future needs of the Hollis and Public Library, given the current deeded purpose of the property at 752 Washington Street for which a public library must be the use, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is to move that the town appropriate 12,000 dollars from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? The FinCom recommend that the town appropriate 12,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article, 5-0-1, with Mr. Robinson absent and Mr. Alfred abstaining. I have a fairly lengthy explanation here if needed, but it's relatively modest sum of money. I'll give the explanation if this debate, it's needed. Any discussion? Yes? While you're addressing, let me give you the explanation in case it helps. The Hollis and Public Library needs to have a clear idea of how to serve our community and specific goals with detailed plans to put ourselves in the best position to receiving an NPL construction grant. Toward this end, the Board of Library Trustees is seeking 12,000 dollars to further their work in defining how the Hollis and Public Library can best meet the needs of the community now and in the future. This continues the process begun with a community survey conducted in 2019 and will be in conjunction with a state grant process that is expected to kick off next year. The cost of this and future planning could potentially be reimbursed through the NBLC's Planning and Design Grant Run when released. It's important to note that the last library state grant program occurred in 2013-14, but finally funded in 1617 and does not occur on any regular schedule. The state has a number of grants for communities looking at library solutions that may include design and engineering all the way to paying for a new library building. In the 201617, in 201617, nine communities were awarded. The Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program grants toward library construction. The average grant award was 40 to 50%, 45 to 50% of the eligible costs of the remaining costs incurred by the municipality. Any libraries not awarded grants were put on a waitlist and have been awarded grants in the gap years. The library trustees voted to pursue the funds for feasibility study so that they can enter the grant cycle with direction and clear intent. With that, additional explanation, go right ahead with your question, ma'am. I'm sorry. Just identify yourself for the crowd.
Shelley Bachner, 21 Concord Street.
Thank you.
The 2019 survey showed that the community wishes to keep the library downtown. Kids can walk there after school. We can run errands and drop off our books. I love walking to the library. I'm pretty sure that a consultant will tell you to build a library in another location due to no parking, wanting more meeting space, and old building woes. Is it possible to let the consultant know how strongly the community feels about remaining downtown? And which leads to a second question. Is it worth hiring consultants if they're going to tell us that we must move the library to a different location? I don't know if there's a trustee in the audience that can answer my question. Library trustees?
Do you have a library trustee that cares to answer the question? We do not. Travis?
So in discussion with the library trustees, I think there is an understanding of information, including recent information from the envisioning future Hollis and Survey Number Two with 1,100 responses, that there is a strong desire and community support for the current facility. At the same point, the grant opportunity that they reference in their description in the document that the moderator just read references the fact that there are multiple opportunities through that grant. It's not specifically to build a new facility, for example. And so there may be a number of different outcomes. I did discuss with the library trustees and, you know, we have done quite a few, as the finance committee chair mentioned earlier, on studies in the last two years. And so I think that the challenge for writing the request for proposals that will lead to this engagement will be to make sure that the consultant understands that we are looking for all potential outcomes and potentially some creative solutions that may be able to address a facility that is deeded for its current purpose and yet does not have the parking that we need and may not support all of the programming that the library trustees may want to pursue in the future. So I think that the reason that it's written the way that it is, is to understand that the outcome may not specifically be that the town pursues only a new structure. It may be a creative solution that incorporates the facility we have now, which people love, but also answers many of the difficult questions that we have to address with a facility, a Carnegie building that is loved but yet has challenges due to its age, including ADA accessibility in the front of the building, the lack of parking, which even if, you know, Nine Green Street is finalized in the spring, the parking, that is still across the street. So again, I think the idea here is, we have, we want to be in position to understand exactly how to approach the grant when it becomes available. That grant process went dormant during COVID, and there's overtures that it's coming back. And so the library trustees are looking to be as armed with all options as possible when that's available.
Thank you. The library trustees owe you a debt of gratitude, Travis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. And the motion is to appropriate 12,000 dollars from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 22, wastewater treatment plant instrumentation sponsored by the select board and estimated cost of 200,000 dollars to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money for costs related to upgrading the instrumentation of the wastewater treatment plant located on Linden Street, which currently services the Woodland Street School Complex, or take any action relative thereto. Move that the town appropriate 200,000 dollars from the capital expenditure fund for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second? Thank you. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate 200,000 dollars from the article, from, strike that, from the capital expenditure fund for the purpose stated in the article, 6-0, with Mr. Robinson absent. Is the discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. This also requires a two-thirds vote, excuse me, requires a two-thirds vote. We'll see if it's unanimous because it proposes the use of capital expenditure funds. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted unanimously. Article 23, payment in lieu of taxes per N's pilot, P-I-L-O-T, for solar projects sponsored by, the article is sponsored by the Board of Assessors, excuse me, the article is sponsored by them, they're not the draft of the article. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board and Board of Assessors to negotiate and enter into a tax agreement for the payment of personal property taxes on the solar photovoltaic facilities located at 103 Bartzak Drive and the energy storage facility proposed at 600 Central Street in accordance with Mass. Journal Arch, Chapter 59, Section 38H, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that the article be approved and presented in the warrant. Is there a second? The FinCom recommends favorable action 5-0-1 with Mr. Robinson absent and Ms. Immer abstaining. The explanation that I offer here, because it's helpful and relatively brief, this article does not speak to the approval of any project from the regulatory authorities, the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, or the Concom. The article would simply authorize the select board and Board of Assessors to negotiate and enter into a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with the developers of the solar photovoltaic facility located at those two locations that have been described. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. And those opposed? Let's vote it. Not unanimously, but by majority. Acceptance? Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. Excuse me. Let's rescind that, and let's go back for discussion. Excuse me, in my haste. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Huh? No, 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 I don't want to be so fast. No, no, you don't have to, I need to apologize to you. Go right ahead. Take your time.
Yes, sir. This is Tom Keefe, Five Mohawk Path. My question is, is in the warrant, it lists that this is a pilot. This is not a pilot. We already have a pilot in place, 39 Marshall, the solar photovoltaic project that was passed on May 9th, 2022, under Article 25. So why do we need another pilot program for every solar project or energy storage project that we have?
It looks to me like this is identifying two specific locations separate from the one that you're describing, but maybe the select board has a different explanation.
I understand. And Article 25 is exactly the same language.
Travis, you want to respond to him? Please?
Yeah, so town meeting needs to approve for every location, so it has to be site-specific. And so the one that you're referencing is a solar project on Marshall Street. These two, one is on Bartzak Drive and one is located on Central Street. Town meeting has to approve the Board of Assessors to negotiate that with the developer, and then the select board can then execute at the end. So town meeting has to authorize that discussion, and as the moderator read, this has nothing to do with the validity of those projects. Those are still being discussed, I believe, by the Concom Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. This is just, should those projects move forward, it allows the Board of Assessors to do its job to work out a payment in lieu of taxes, and then the select board to execute when the Board of Assessors is happy with the outcome.
Yes, it appear, sir, to redirect conflict of interest, or the appearance of a conflict of interest, because it allows a town to engage in negotiations with a developer or a solar project, the owner of the facilities, in advance of being approved by the town. Can I make a motion at all?
Make any motion you like.
I'd like to make a motion that this is tabled on the basis of there's already a pilot program in place.
No, you understand, sir, the explanation that was given, I'm not going to show your ability to make a motion, as described. There's a pilot in place with respect to another location that's been voted. Gentlemen's indicated to you with respect to these locations, it requires a separate vote at town meeting. What happened with respect to another piece of property at another town meeting is irrelevant to what's happening here. You can argue in for or against this, but it's not a conflict of interest for the town meeting to take up and consider whether or not to authorize the selectmen to enter to a pilot with respect to two other locations.
By clarification, I'm not saying that there is a conflict, just to avoid the appearance. I'm not saying there's a conflict whatsoever that the town engage in that. So I'd like to make a motion to table Article 23.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, that's seconded. That's open for discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any discussion on the motion to table the article that's been made and seconded? Ken, did you want to be heard?
Just to point a clarification, by tabling, do you mean indefinitely postpone?
No, it's a separate motion, Jay. Is it not to table? I have one referenced.
Ken, that was, I'm interpreting it as tabling indefinitely, not tabling for the purpose of bringing back in the same meeting, perhaps.
I'm just saying that.
There is a difference. Indefinite postponement is a simple majority. Tabling is a two-thirds vote. But tabling is something very different because a later motion can take it off the table. I'm sensing from the way the speaker was talking that it was being tabled for discussion for the rest of the meeting, but I don't want to speak for him.
Sir? Sir? Mr. Keefe, if you can, come down here for a second for me. No, come down to the phone so the folks can pick you up at home. The question raised is kind of a technical one, and the question is, are you asking town meeting to put the motion, this article, on the table to be considered perhaps later in the town meeting, or is your request to indefinitely postpone it, meaning ask town meeting? to indefinitely postpone it, meaning ask town meeting to negatively vote on the article?
I would like it postponed, until if the plan that the project is approved, and of course, engage in the negotiations by all means.
Okay. So I'm going to treat that as a motion to indefinitely postpone. Ma'am, does your second stand on the same basis?
Yes.
Okay. The motion made and seconded for indefinite postponement. Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
That's open for discussion. Any discussion on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Yes. Mr. Non-Resident?
He's our principal assessor.
Okay. Now, Mr. Rudin, I'm not familiar with you, sir. Is that Principal Assessor? Step up, identify yourself to the unknowing like me.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Kevin Rudin. I'm your Principal Assessor. To let you know how the process works, no negotiations would take place with any company unless and until they are approved by all the permitting agencies, planning, zoning, conservation. The sole reason for putting this article on the warrant tonight is the next opportunity to put it on a warrant is next May. If one or both of these are approved between now and, let's say, May, we still need that article to go forward and negotiate. The intent is to try to speed the process along so that when the permitting agencies approve, we can then have negotiations and a pilot agreement in place at the time they connect to the grid. For example, the Marshall Street Solar, not the one on the town dump, the one on the old...
Town landfill, sir, not town dump, isn't it? The town landfill?
Town landfill, excuse me.
Okay, all right, all right.
But the one on the old bird property is complete and getting ready to hook up, and we are just had agreement on a pilot that we're going to send to legal counsel, it's coming, to review so that when they turn on in January, there's a pilot in place. If you don't want to approve the ability to negotiate a pilot agreement, the alternative is rather than each side knowing what money they're paying and what money the town is getting every year, which benefits the town when it budgets, is to review it every year and tax it as personal property, which tends to result in usually a lot of abatement requests if they disagree. Here, with a pilot, we negotiated a 20-year agreement upfront that's amenable to both people. But again, the sole purpose for putting on the warrant tonight is not to jump the gun, it's to wait till they're approved, but then start negotiating, and then hopefully, when they're ready to connect to the grid. And one of the two projects is very simple, and will, if approved, will probably be ready in the spring. It's just to be ready to go and let them turn on. Otherwise, by the way, without a good agreement, they can't connect to the grid. They have to wait for us. So I hope that answers, or gives you an explanation of the process.
Great. Thank you, sir. Further discussion?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the article. Oh, sorry. You have another question, Mr. Keefe?
I have one.
You all set? Yeah.
Right now, we have nearly, we have 100% home and rock opposition to this project right now. It's likely to drag on for a while through litigation, whatever. I think negotiating for the in lieu of taxes under Article 23 is very premature right now. So there are a lot of moving parts to this, and I don't think there's an advantage to negotiating now, as I didn't hear his name. I apologize.
Yeah.
So I would say that, given the circumstances and the proximity to the right next, it's 84 feet from my house, these, this solar facility, I don't want to make this out of the project discussion, but it's going to be very important to an awful lot of people. We're going to look forward to the ask for the town of Holliston's help on this. There's a lot of people that are going to be affected in the neighborhood. This is the Highlands of Holliston, and this is 84 feet from my house. So this is, we're a little bit impassioned by this, so I apologize in advance to everybody.
No, you don't have to apologize. You're entitled. That's what this, that's what this meeting is for. So that's, it's okay. You don't have to apologize.
All right. You know, there, I have all sorts of, a lot of the members of the community are very emotional about this right now because of the proximity to the community. So again, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, further discussion? If not, then we'll proceed on the motion to indefinitely post... Yes? Do you want to be heard, ma'am? Okay. Thank God I got you to show me up, Liz. Ma'am, just tell us your name and address, please, okay? Thank you.
I'm Minnie Gupta, 92 Pilgrim Road. So I'm one of the residents who will get directly affected by the proposal of the energy storage system at 600 Central Street property. And it's, it's going to affect all the properties there directly. And it's something which we are, as just mentioned previously, it's extremely dangerous, and we are all very emotional about it. And I think I would strongly suggest that we indefinitely postpone this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir. Then?
Vincent Murphy, 432 Norfolk Street. And I thoroughly appreciate the sides and people who are concerned about the neighborhoods, but this isn't the place for that. That's a planning board decision and the conservation decision. This is solely to negotiate a pilot program. So as Kevin mentioned, this will allow us to start negotiating rather than waiting until May, if whenever. If it doesn't happen, get approved by the planning board, because I hear opposite people arguing against the situations, that's fine. But at the same time, let's say hypothetically, it does go, we shouldn't be waiting to give approval in May if we've greenlit this project back in December. We should be able to collect, start collecting money sooner than later. Therefore, I think the Board of Assessors and the assessor, town assessor, would be allowed to negotiate on behalf of the town these pilot programs. So, and I, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. What's that? Move the question? Is a second to that?
Second, sir.
Thank you. All right, we're going to proceed to a motion, a vote on the motion to move the article as presented and described in the warrant. Enough, strike that. Motion to indefinite postpone, excuse me. All right, all those in favor indefinitely postponement say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Those opposed?
No.
That does not carry. We'll proceed now to vote on the main motion, that the article be approved as presented in the warrant that's been seconded and discussed. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article 24, acceptance of an easement for rail trail to see if the town will vote to accept an easement as shown on a plan of land entitled "Easement Plan Holliston, Massachusetts, prepared by GLM Engineering Consultant, Inc., dated July 22, 2022, or take any action relative thereto. Move that the, the motion is moved that the article be presented, be approved as presented in the warrant. The explanation is offered that the rail trail easement in Hopping Brook Industrial Park provides access for users to go from the parking lot to the trail itself. See the map of Appendix C of combined warrant. And I thought I did receive, let me just check if I can for a second. With respect to this article, I did receive notice from Ryan Clapp, the Conservation Agent, that last evening, the Conservation Commission discussed the rail trail easement that is on the town meeting warrant with Peter Barberi. After review and discussion, the Concom wishes to offer support for the article and the acceptance of the easement. Is there a second? This requires a two-thirds vote. Jay, because it's dealing with the acquisition of a real estate interest?
Yes.
Okay. So requires a two-thirds vote. We'll proceed with a voice call and see if it's unanimous. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye. I'm strike that. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Article 25, report of envisioning future Holliston sponsored by CLRPC to hear a report of the Comprehensive Long Rage Plan Committee, known as Envisioning Future Holliston, following which the original charge will have been fulfilled and the committee shall be disbanded in its current form or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved to hear the report of the Comprehensive Long Rage Planning Committee and dissolve the committee in its current form. Is there a second?
Second.
And I'm advised that there'll be a presentation, doesn't say brief, but it says there'll be a presentation to town meeting by the representatives of the, I'm just kidding you guys, of Envisioning Future Holliston Committee. Please note that Article 26 works in conjunction with this article. Go right ahead. Gentlemen, please identify yourself and...
Well, we're back. Ken Henderson, 1028 Washington Street.
Matt Pavinsky, 95 Overlook Drive. Ken, how do we work with Travis to get the earlier articles? I don't understand what we did to them to get this opinion, but we'll talk about that later.
There is a procedure in the town meeting rules that allows you to advance an article for early consideration if you get it to...
Oh, now you know.
Sorry.
They're using up our time.
Well, help keep us quorum, because everybody's been waiting for this presentation, so you kept them all here.
Well, as you know, back in May 2021, a committee was formed to come up with a way to assess the values and what the town would like to see as our future. In that charge, 17 committee members representing all the standing committees in the town, so we get a broad idea of the different issues that might come up. The first thing we did was to try to define ourselves just a bit and come up with a survey that would be administered as widely as possible to try to measure where we stand as far as what we value and what we'd like Holliston to look like in the future. After the survey was collected, it gave us a broad idea of the background of where we are as far as ideas, but it also generated the fact that we need to dig a little deeper, and that generated the need for a second part to the survey.
Right. So thanks to you folks, all, you know, the town, we, in that second survey, we looked at the first survey, we found that we needed a little bit more data. We could, we had some really interesting data, and how can we expand it a little bit? So we put a call out with a second survey, and the first one got the 400 responses. The second one, we were just blown away with 1,000 responses. So thank you all, for those of you who filled it out. With that, also want to do a special shout out to Kathleen Buckley, who also helped us a lot in getting the outreach to get that filled out. So I really, really wanted to go through the thousands of comments that were on air tonight, but I figure there's, we don't have, you said brief, so...
No, I'm just kidding.
No, no, really, I don't want to go through that. But the results are on the website. So at this point, the original committee is looking to disband, which is 25, and then 26 is looking to create a new committee, which is more, I think we said, five, five, seven, down to seven with five associate members, just to be a little bit more effective with the meetings. And then looking for an appropriation of funds for a consultant, because as you can imagine, there's a lot of good data there, and it's time, if we really want to take this seriously and envision future Holliston, we got to make a little bit of investment to get that data to present a picture. It's a very comp, it's complicated data. It's, you know, we have folks that want to build up the industries and the industrial parks. We have folks that want to focus on environmental protection. All good things that we want to do, and it just is going to need a little bit of investment to pull that together. So that's why we're overly supportive of that appropriation as well. I think that's, is that everything?
Thank you. Gentlemen, further discussion? Gentlemen, thank you for your work. The motion has been made and seconded. That's real. All those in favor of the motion to hear that report, which we just heard, and dissolve the committee in its current form, say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Thank you. Article 26, which was explained by the gentleman, update to envisioning future Holliston sponsored by the town administrator, estimated cost of $80,000 to see if the town will vote to approve the charge and makeup of the revised Envisioning Future Holliston Committee to be a seven-member committee appointed by the town administrator with up to five associate members for the purpose of representing the community in an engagement with a consultant to develop a town-wide strategic plan using data from envisioning future Holliston surveys and existing departmental strategic plans, and further to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, $80,000 for strategic planning initiatives, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is moved that this article be approved as presented in the warrant, including appropriation of $80,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The FinCom recommends that the town appropriate $80,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article, six zero with Mr. Robinson absent. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I get this for Article 23, so I didn't know if you could miss it.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Fritz Warby. My pronouns are she, hers, and I am at 83 Rolling Meadow Drive. I'm here tonight along with several other members of diverse Holliston to express our group's support for the continuance of the important work of the Envisioning Future Holliston Committee. We really appreciate all of the work that has gone into this project so far. One of our goals for diverse Holliston is to collaborate with town government and civic groups to create a Holliston that is welcoming and where people of all backgrounds thrive. So we're very invested in this conversation about the future of Holliston. For those of you who are not familiar, some of diverse Holliston's most recent initiatives have included work with the school committee and school administration to advocate for social and emotional learning and equity in our schools, as well as educational programming for school leaders and parents in partnership with Holliston Public Schools, Holliston PTO and Mindshare, Holliston Youth and Family Services, and CPAC. This work will continue in the coming months with an upcoming event that we're having, How to Have Important Conversations with Our Kids: Parenting for Greater Inclusion. Another partnership we have been developing is that of working with Envisioning Future Holliston. Since August of this year, we have been involved with consulting on Survey Number Two and helping to analyze the data. We'd like to continue our support and collaboration as Envisioning Future Holliston moves forward. We were pleased and heartened to see that many of the survey responses included diversity and inclusion as important priorities for people in Holliston, and we would like to be a voice for that in the next phase of this project. We're also mindful of the need to pay closer attention to the voices of underrepresented members of the community to make sure that we are reaching as many of the people of Holliston as possible in this work. So to that end, not only do we enthusiastically support the creation of this new seven-member committee, we'd like to volunteer one or more of diverse Holliston members to participate. We're excited to work together with other leaders in town on making a more inclusive and equitable Holliston a reality. And in the spirit of inclusion, for the benefit of any other Holliston resident who is interested in joining this effort, we'd like to ask the question, what is the process for how the seven-member committee would, will be selected?
Assuming passage of the article, right? Okay. Travis, any thoughts on how you're going to select members for this?
Certainly. So I think generally speaking, if you look at the way that the original 17-member group was created in May of 2021, it listed 17 boards and committees, which then I worked with to seat an individual to represent that. I think at the peak, we had 16 members. And as we looked at the participation of all those members over very many meetings, including subcommittee meetings, we saw obviously that a... those members over very many meetings, including subcommittee meetings, we saw obviously that a smaller group was necessary, especially when the group needed to get together to talk about big-picture items like issuing surveys, and that's how we came to the number of seven. So if you group those 17 committees into categories, generally speaking, the way that we approach municipal government, we look at those in these different categories. So Health and Human Services, things like parks, COA, library, Trail Committee, General Government Services, think public safety, public works, facilities, public education, which was represented, and actually the chair of envisioning future Holliston was the school committee's member, Stacy Raffey, who's here tonight. Sustainability and Environment was one that we actually, we had an individual, Rich Rosenberg, who's here tonight as well, representing, not necessarily from a board and committee, but he had put his name forward through the process, knowing that that seat was going to be there. Economic Development was seated through a member of the Economic Development Committee. And then Land Use had planning, building, conservation, open space. In a seven-member group, we would most likely look to have representation from those areas. And then in the seven-member group, we would most likely also look for an at-large, similar to what led to Mr. Rosenberg's involvement, where it wasn't specifically a town border committee member that took that seat. So in the at-large, to the residents' discussion there, I think would probably be the best fit, in that diverse Holliston is not currently a border committee under the umbrella of the town. Otherwise, again, we had very, you know, for the individuals who participated, we'd like to see this through, work with the consultant that will be brought on through the procurement process. We want to make sure that those individuals have the opportunity to continue. And then the associate seats, again, as we saw through very important work that we were trying to move at a reasonable pace with, to be able to have meetings on a consistent basis, there were some times where we were unable to meet quorum, meaning that the group could not meet and take action. And so the associate member seat, for example, in a category like land use of planning, zoning, building, conservation, open space, to have the primary member, but then an associate member who can be an alternate vote in the event that that person can't make a meeting, will allow the group to continue, and allow more than seven members to be involved in the group at a time, so everybody has to stay involved in the discussions, and yet we will continue to move the group along. Again, the concept here, as we have multiple strategic plans for different departments, between public schools, which I was happy to be part of their revised strategic planning initiative, the department, excuse me, the police department, which will have their consultant update the select board on their five-year strategic plan update. The idea here is that we'll have a consultant that will try to tie together all of our strategic plans for different departments together into one for the town, while also taking all of the information that envisioning future Holliston has. This is based on a model that envisioning future Holliston used by reaching out to other communities that have gone through a similar process. Yarmouth was one example, Rentham was another, and so the reason, just, I believe I answered the question, so I just want to expand a little bit on the reason that the number is $80,000. We looked at who hired consultants to work with volunteer-driven groups, Yarmouth and Rentham being examples. I spoke with those communities and then went down the rabbit hole of who they got their ideas from and so forth, and we came to $80,000. We think it's a reasonable amount, but we will have to issue an RFP, at which point we will indicate through that document what we're looking for from a consultant, whether it be diversity, equity, inclusion, and sort of all of the highlighted items, as that is just one of all of the data that we've collected, that envisioning future Holliston collected, and put together and find the right consultant. And then this group, this seven-member group with five associate members, would then be representing the community in that discussion, and then anything sort of beyond that, once final documents are done or ready to be received, will be brought back to town meeting. So that's generally the process that we would follow, based on the communities that have gone before us, that we felt to be extremely successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Robert Principay, 203 Turner Road. I just, so I, again, as has been stated and as you've spoke to, the idea of, you know, completely respectful of the input that's come to this point, the amount of work that's gone in from so many, so many hard-working folks to come, pull this data together. I think, I want, I want as a citizen to emphasize that if we're going to be representative in the future, that, that the processes needed to happen differently. It can't happen the same way. I'm not saying that that's exclusive of what you just described. You did talk about drawing from people that already have been involved, which is, absolutely should happen, in respect for all the work they put into it. But we also have to think, I think one of the things that stood out to me from the statement that was read, was the underrepresented voices in this town. And if we can, if we can picture that in the context of, say, my being a parent of a black child in a Holliston public school, or being, you know, parents, mom and mom, et cetera, having a different family structure, than is the tradition as people perceive things. How do we get those kind of voices to look at that same data? And what will their lens be in looking at that same data? So my, my point is, I want to just emphasize, you have to do it different. You have to pull, you have to go out and find the voices underrepresented. They're not going to come to you by a poster, or certainly not by just, and again, I'm not, I am, I'm pushing back a bit on the process of drawing from what's already been there. We have to do more than that. Holliston's future depends on that. It's not just about us. It's about this town's viability in a much more diverse demographic across the country and across the state. That is not going backwards. So, I just want to emphasize the fact that we have to think about, to do respect to those that have worked on this to this point, and then intentionally develop mechanisms, which I didn't hear mentioned here, to find representation of voices underrepresented, unheard, invisible, and their experiences invisible, to come to that data and say, what does it need to be, how do we do this differently? Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay. Seeing no further raised hands, the motion is that the article be approved as presented in the warrant, including an appropriation of $80,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the article. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 27 is a citizen's petition regarding zoning. You heard reference earlier this evening with respect to citizen position petitions, with, just by way of explanation, there's a provision in the master general law that allows citizens to, in an appropriate number, to gather together and submit to town meeting a citizen's petition. We are obligated to accept the petition as it's drafted. We don't generally amend it, move to amend it, or do things of that nature, which is submitted in the form as presented. So I'll read it as presented. Citizen's petition regarding zoning, and it's sponsored by a citizen's petition, and it reads as follows. To see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw changed to pre-existing non-conforming uses, structures, and lots, I-E, by addition of a definition for original gross floor area as follows. Original gross floor area, colon, shall be defined as the gross floor area on the most recent of one, the date on which any current structure, pre-existing nonconformity was created, semicolon, or two, 20 years prior to the date of permit application for any planned increase in the gross floor area, or take any action relative thereto. As with respect to zoning articles, a hearing was conducted by the planning board, which held a public hearing regarding this petition, as required by Master on Law's Chapter 48, Section 5, on September 29, 2022. The members voted 5-0 against support of the proposed citizen's petition as printed in the warrant. Is the petitioner here this evening that wants to be heard? Mr. Alfred? Haven't heard from you in a while.
I've been told I'm more efficient when I shut my mouth.
Welcome. Just identify yourself and your address, if you will, sir.
So Dan Alfred, 315 High Street. So as we've passed the 10 o'clock hour, and I'm sure everyone here is eager to get on to talking about tobacco, I'll just make the point that after a fruitful conversation with the, with the planning board, they agree that there might be, need some clarification in this zoning bylaw, and while they did not support my article, they did agree to continue discussions about it for the potential in May. And so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone my article to continue the conversations with the planning board.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted, thank you, Mr. Alfred. Article 28 is also a citizen's petition entitled Tobacco Permits, sponsored by citizen's petition. As residents of Holliston, we are petitioning for the Board of Health to delay any changes to tobacco permits until there is full vetting with the public and all town boards and committees, including long-range plan, long-range planning. In the event that the Board of Health has passed a vote to change the regulations, we ask that they reconsider that vote. The change in tobacco permitting signifies a change, a substantive change in the culture and overturns actions requested by the community in 2018, specifically the Holliston Drug and Awareness Coalition. Allowing cigar bars and other changes could weaken Holliston's public health and potentially lead to an increase in tobacco use, as well as diseases, cancers, and health effects that would come with it. As the Holliston community works to address a rise in youth substance, in youth substance use and mental health issues, the town must work to protect and prioritize our youngest residents. The petitioners and signers have requested a petition to speak, and I've advised by town council that this article is in the nature of a referendum or an expression of the sentiment of town meeting. It's not binding on the Board of Health. The Board of Health is statutory authority to adopt regulations within their statutory purview, but the article, I presume, is intended as to express the sentiment of town meeting. So can we hear from the petitioner? Does somebody wish to want to be heard on behalf of the petition? Just tell us your name and address, please. Thank you. Take as much time as you like.
Thanks. Eva Stahl, 66 Winthrop. I'm here tonight as the co-chair of the Holliston Drug and Alcohol Awareness Coalition. As many of you may not know, the coalition recently was awarded a multi-year grant to raise awareness about substance use and work collaboratively with the community to promote a culture of prevention. Local businesses, faith leaders, community members, police, fire, and town departments worked collaboratively to develop and submit this grant application, and in that work, we aim to engage all community members and stakeholders to work in lockstep to help our youth develop relationships they need to feel connected and with each other and to the Holliston community. When youth feel connected and supported, they thrive. Part of this strategy also includes showing our youth what healthy living looks like, so they will emulate adults and community leaders. So first and foremost, the coalition applauds the Board of Health's intention to increase fines for noncompliance, a clear sign to entities that sell tobacco that the community and the Board of Health prioritizes limiting, limiting access of tobacco to underage individuals. With respect to other changes to tobacco permits, the coalition would like to work with the Board of Health to better understand why they want to change the cap on tobacco permits and regulations to allow for smoking and cigar bars, and second, allow for the sale of blunt wraps when many neighboring towns have them banned. A few points that we think are worth noting in this discussion. Research shows again and again that there is no safe level of exposure to tobacco smoke. The only effective way to protect people is to provide 100% smoke-free air. Designated smoking rooms, expensive ventilation systems, and similar partial approaches do not protect people from the dangers of secondhand smoke. The simplest and cheapest way to protect people from secondhand smoke is to create smoke-free environments. Changes to a smoke-free environment puts workers at risk. While we seek to eliminate tobacco access for youth under 21, we struggle to keep it out of the hands of young people, particularly our high school students. Anything that increases access to tobacco will place our, will place our youth at risk of use and becoming addicted. An estimated 1,350 youth between the ages of 12 and 17 smoke their first cigar each day. In 2021, among high school current cigar users, one out of five used the product on 20 or more days in the past 30, and nearly half of the youth past 30-day cigar users reported using blunts, cigars that are hollowed out and used to smoke marijuana. The costs of tobacco are great. Annual healthcare costs in Massachusetts directly caused by smoking top $4 billion annually. To put it another way, Massachusetts resident state and federal tax burden from smoking caused government expenditures, in terms of government expenditures, is about $750 for each of our households, and thousands of people die each year. As a coalition committed to protecting our youth and community members from the harms of addiction, we're deeply concerned that making these changes without a thoughtful, slow process of public engagement anchored in zoning review and protections first is most prudent. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, and I'm also here to support...
Tell us your name, please, sir.
My name's Carl Lieberman. I live at 335 Marshall Street.
Thank you.
I'm here to support the citizen's petition and to support what Eva had just talked about. So I'm also a member of the Holliston Drug and Alcohol Awareness Coalition. I'm a physician. I'm board certified in family medicine, addiction medicine. I've been treating addiction for most of my career, which is close to 20 years. So basically, I am also here to ask the Board of Health to delay any changes to the town regulations regarding relaxing restrictions on tobacco. So as Eva mentioned, the harms of tobacco are great, and as we know, it's a, it causes lung cancer, all kinds of cancer, heart disease, in pretty much every organ system. It's the number one preventable cause of disease in this country, more than alcohol, accidents, obesity. 16 million people live with at least one tobacco-related disease. 480,000 people die each year from tobacco-related disease, and 41,000 deaths are from secondhand smoke. Life expectancy is approximately 10 years less in smokers versus non-smokers. The costs are $600 billion per year, which includes costs from disease, costs from loss of productivity. Every, every pack of cigarette that's sold costs over $7 in terms of healthcare and lost productivity. Many adults who smoke want to stop, but it's very hard to stop. Once you start smoking, it becomes, once the addiction starts in, it becomes more of a compulsion rather than a conscious choice. I've worked with many people over years who want to stop. It's just not easy. It starts before the age of 18 in 90% of people. The more we can restrict or prevent people from starting, the better. I treat people, I work in the addiction treatment field, as I had mentioned. I work in two facilities that treat addiction and also a private practice. People tell me who are in recovery from opioids and alcohol, that it's often harder to stop cigarettes than it is to stop, I mean, it's harder to stop tobacco compared to alcohol and opioids. The good news is that efforts to prevent youth from starting smoking are starting to work. In 2020, 6.2 million youths used tobacco products. In 2021, 4.5 million, in 2021, used tobacco products. So that's a significant decrease. There's a lot of efforts on the local level, the state level, national level, to reduce it. Best way to treat an addiction is to prevent it. So anyways, I support the coalition and the petition to not relax the restrictions on tobacco in this, in this town. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Eva and Carl. My name is Jackie Weiner, and I serve in two capacities here in Holliston. I'm the director of Holliston Youth and Family Services, and I also oversee the Holliston Drug and Alcohol Awareness Coalition, which has longstanding roots here in Holliston. The coalition has accomplished many things over the years, including most recently, a $625,000 drug-free community grant under the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy. The Board of Health was presented, the tobacco regulations... The Board of Health was presented the tobacco regulations, revisions, in a preliminary way, to clarify the fee and suspension for tobacco violations. The Board of Health is now considering allowing the sale of blunt wraps and changing tobacco regulations to allow smoking bars and remove the reducing tobacco permit cap. Currently, the Holliston tobacco regulations in place are a complete ban on smoking indoors. There are no smoking bars and a complete ban in public places. Changing tobacco regulations to allow for smoking bars will also mean reversal on this public smoking ban. The coalition wants to work with the Board of Health to not think of these changes as all or nothing. While we appreciate that adults get to make adult decisions, addiction is not a choice. We're concerned about the impact this will have on youth and adult attitudes, which we know is linked to certain risk factors associated with high rates of substance misuse among youth, and we would like the Board of Health to move for, move forward with the fines and regulation changes and consider delaying a vote on the sale of blunt wraps, reducing caps, and smoking bars until proper enforcement measures and zoning requirements are in place. Residents can email the town administrator and select board and health director, Scott Moles, at moles, M-O-L-E-S-S, at holliston.k12 MA US to have your voices heard.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mary Greendale, 198 Highland Street. I guess the only question that I have is, what is the public health benefit of the changes that are being proposed? It's the public health department that's proposing them, so I would assume that there are some public health benefits, but I haven't heard what they are. Thanks.
Thank you.[1643.65][1643.65](Applause). Okay, hearing none. The article has been presented, doesn't require a second. Before we proceed to a vote on that, and I recognize that following motion, I want to thank our town clerk, Liz, and her assistant Veronica for their work preparing for town meeting and keeping track of our actions here tonight. I want to thank our town council, Jay Talaman. He hasn't had to do a whole lot of work here tonight, but it's comforting for me to have a professional alongside me to pick me up where I hit a roadblock and create a deficiency. Jay does a lot of work with our town administrator in advance of town meeting, so the product that you see in the warrant and the motions are not crafted by me. I present them tonight, but they're crafted by people who are professionals at it. And I want to particularly acknowledge Travis Ahern's efforts on behalf of the town. I've been in town a long time, I've seen a lot of town officials up close, and he's a first-class town official. He does a wonderful job, is a pleasure to work with, and part of the reason town meeting goes as smoothly as it does is because he, and through his efforts, gives me a product to deliver to you that is first-rate, so I want to acknowledge that.[1714.45][1714.45](Applause). Yes, Ben?
Can you read it? Okay. I just wanted to thank you, Bill, for moderating.
Oh.
Moving us along. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks very much. That's one of my strong points, is moving things along. Thank you. That's kind of you to say. Okay, all that aside, thank you very much, and let's move to, to vote. All those in favor of the citizen's petition as read, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone with the temerity to oppose it, please say no.[1753.71][1753.71](Laughter). Any noes? No, that's unanimous then. Okay, fine. Thank you.[1759.63][1759.63](Applause). Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Good night. Thank you for joining us.